I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand thirteen at six thirty. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here. Here.
Commissioner Spatter here, Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Fairpenny.
Here. Tonight's emergency will be given by Chaplain Larry Black of North Pinellas, Florida Hospital. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following?
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed a giver of all good gifts. And we come together this evening to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. So we ask that you'd be with us in our deliberations, help us to be wise in the decisions that are made for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us, oh Lord, from short-sightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that strive to be for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. And may our glory be to you, loving God, now and forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. We will now go to, uh, public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Uh, if you have something, please come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you're given up to four minutes.
Not yet. Something. Good evening. My name is Terry Demertis. I own the Acropoles Market Market in Tarpon Springs since nineteen seventy-six. And we have a little problem there. Every second week, almost, they're having a party, I mean, a festival. Not food business, we gotta have a...
Excuse me. That, that item will be on the agenda, and when we talk about it, you'll have an opportunity to speak to it.
I'm sorry.
This is for any item that's not on the agenda.
Well, thank you.
John Lee. I would like to announce that our items, number twenty-two, Resolutions, Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero one, Valerius Partners, and, uh, Resolution, and item number twenty-three, Resolution twenty thirteen dash zero three, Valley Hoos has been deferred by the applicant to a future agenda. And item number twenty-four, Ordinance twenty twelve dash nineteen, St. Housen Act has been deferred to February fifth, two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, yeah, just on the, uh, Valley Hoos issue, we're not sure where that's gonna be deferred to because we don't know what the extent of their changes are. Um, if there's some changes that are substantial, it would have to go back to a planning and zoning board and then to the commission. If it's not, it comes to future commission, but we will re-advertise it and let you know when that date is. But again, we're not sure what changes they're gonna bring back to it, so we're uncertain to what date it will be heard again. But again, we'll put out the notifications and let everybody know when it's gonna be back on the agenda.
Okay. Uh, next item is Proclamations. State of Florida Arbor Day. This proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, where as eighteen seventy-two, James Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation. Each state has adopted a state Arbor Day, and whereas the state of Florida has designated the third Friday of January to observe, to be observed as Arbor Day. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water cutting, heating, and cooling costs, uh, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, uh, produce life, giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable sources, giving us safer wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city include property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and unify our community, and whereas they are planted, wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of mail, of being the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, to hereby proclaim Friday, January eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Arbor Day. In the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And this will be, uh, mailed by the clerks. Also, item number two is Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, uh, Day. This proclamation, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, where as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior dedicated his life and used his leadership skills for peaceful fight for freedom, equality, justice, and civil rights, and whereas the determined and unselfish work of Dr. King and those who united with him to further individual rights and human dignity has become an inspirational to persons of all social, religious, and racial and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas for this reason, we honor and remember the life, career, and dreams of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior to celebrate the holiday in commemoration in his honor in the true spirit of goodwill and community by living the dream and serving a cause of equality, peace, justice, and freedom. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, to hereby proclaim January twenty-first, two thousand thirteenth, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And just as a note, it will be celebrated, uh, on that preceding Saturday here in the City of Tarpon Springs. And this will make sure that, uh, Reverend Smith or someone with the committee, uh, gives it. Are there any, uh, public comments on any one of these items?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Uh, Happy New Year and hope all is blessed for the coming year ahead. Uh, I wanted to speak about the Arbor Day, but being that both proclamations were read, I also wanted to take a moment to, uh, say something about Martin Luther King. Uh, you know, we have a holiday and everybody kind of, uh, celebrates it as a day of civil rights and things. But I think sometimes we need to go back and hear his words. Kinda ironic, Sunday morning, before I went to church, I turned on WMNF and from six to eight, they do like a gospel show. But during a segment, they played Dr. Dr. Martin Luther King's speech, Funland. I'd never heard this speech before. It's where he talks to his daughter, and Funland's like a Disneyland-type place, and they drive by it and she wants to go, and he has to say, "Well, you know, we can't go" because, you know, it kinda vague the situation. Later, the daughter sees an ad on the TV, and it's advertising Funland and the kiddies, and and he talks about how, finally has to says to the daughter that, you know, "They won't allow us because of the color of our skin." And that's good that we've kinda gotten beyond that point. But Martin Luther talked about other inequalities, other civil rights, economic, poverty, education, justice. And these are struggles we still continue to fight against prejudices and old ways of doing things that have locked us into habits of the past. So, as we proclaim on Martin Luther King Day, maybe we should all look at our own actions and how we can make this a better world for all people, black, white, poor, rich, Muslim, Italian, Greek, Irish. Because that's what we truly are here in America. And with regards to Arbor Day, just like with Martin Luther, it's nice to proclaim we believe in civil rights, and who's not gonna say we're not for trees? But our actions sometimes speak louder than words. We all need to take a part in our responsibilities to maintaining our trees and our natural environment. So often, we talk about climate change and the carbon dioxide and these things of that nature. Then they talk about carbon taxes and all these other things to fix it. Nobody ever seems to talk about fixing it by trees. That's really the biggest issue that's been going on for years, how they cleared the Amazon, how they cleared out Africa, how we here through centuries have cleared out America. So we really, if we really are concerned about our air and our values, we all need to take a look about how we can have a positive tree growth versus a continual degradation of the number of trees in our area. And it's empowering, not only to citizens, where it says, "Urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands," but I think it's important that we now start looking at putting people in government that feel that way too. Thank you.
There are no other public comments. We'll go to our consistent agenda. Uh, number three is satisfaction of release of leaves, four attorney fees. Uh, Thompson, Sizmo, Gonzalez here in LLP, invoice number six eight three three five. Uh, five is special events, one's, uh, Arts and Crafts Show, January nineteenth, uh, through the twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. This was deferred from the December eighteenth, two thousand twelve agenda. Six is approved renewal of mutual aid agreement with the Panaos County Sheriff and other municipalities. Seven, approved renewal of mutual aid agreement with Tascow County Sheriff. Eight, authorized youth police to sign sexual offender, offender tracking unit spot, uh, memorandum of understanding with the Panaos County Sheriff. Uh, nine is authorized increase to file number one two zero zero five seven dash C dash CM radio communications equipment accessories to Panaos County Contract one one two dash zero 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 three dash N SS. Ten authorized increase to contract number zero nine zero zero four six dash C janitorial and floor services level and authorized the purchasing administrators to utilize City of Tampa bid number four one zero eight one eight one zero automotive replacement parts. Uh, twelve is authorized utilization of State of Florida Contract number two five zero dash W F C A dash one zero A S C computer equipment. Thirteen authorized increase to file number one two zero zero eight three dash N dash TK Allen Bradley Bradley parts. Fourteen, uh, award bid number one three zero zero two seven dash B dash C M yard waste disposal. Fifteen increased file number zero nine zero 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 two dash C electrical products to U.S. Community Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement number four three two seven two. Um, do anyone have any comments on any of these items? Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name, address. You've given up to four minutes to speak to which one you would like to.
My name is Mike. Um, I live at fifteen oh four Riverside Drive. I'm here to speak on, uh, number five. Number five is a, um, application for a special event for three days, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first. I don't know, but y'all should have in front of you an application. Uh, if you take a look at that application, you will notice that names are supplied without last names. It says who the people to contact. It says David and, uh, Freedom. I am a property owner on eight and a half, eight hundred and a half on Duganese Boulevard. This application, if it's granted, completely closes off my access to the public. I cannot do any business on that date. It's a parking lot. If it was happening once or twice a year, I wouldn't be down here. It happened over thirty times last year. I look at your special ordinance on the subject. If you will look at your own special ordinance, uh, twelve point five dash eleven, section three, it appears that you limit closing people down to once a month. Otherwise, it should be denied. I was also here two weeks ago when a Mr. George Belairis was trying to put kiosses on his own property. I'm not here defending kiosses one way or the other. But it seems odd to me to deny a property owner the right to put kiosses, but allow strangers who don't pay taxes to put kios- kiosses in front of my property and shut me down where I'm out of business. Now, I'm here for another reason. I might be able to solve my problem because with the city manager, they're gonna try to work out some, some process of having the cars still be able to come into my parking lot to park. But I've talked to my neighbors down there, other gift shops. It says, "Mike, maybe your, your problem is being solved, but we're against competitors who don't pay taxes coming down here, closing the property down several times a year." We're not talking about Christmas and New Years and some special event. If I give your statute a constitutional approach, it would be a limited amount of times. You can't just close it down every day of the year. Maybe twelve times a year. Well, you're already doing it seven times because of the Greek night. I buy it. And right now, there's applications for fourteen more times. These three days plus the Greek, uh, Liberation Day. That'll be eleven. And we haven't even started the year. It's January the eighth. This is approaching inverse condemnation. I have to continuously call different departments, whether it's the city manager or whoever, to try to work out some deal with whoever is making this application. Now, this application should be denied because they didn't put any last names down. I thought y'all were gonna catch it when I said my name was Mike without giving my last name. But my last name is Hula. But I noticed George Belairis, when he made an application, if he didn't have all his dots and Ts done, he got turned down. Well, this is happening so readily, it's automatic. They're closing down property so other people can put kiosses out there to make money. This is not going to the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts. A bit different story. If y'all wanted to close my street down three, four times a year, I'd donate my parking lot for some charitable reason. But this is thirty to thirty-five, forty times a year, that you close the property down. You can't get in the front door. Now, they give me solutions coming in the back door, but that's like having a restaurant telling everybody come through the kitchen and in the garbage room to come in to eat in the restaurant. This is inverse condemnation. You should know about it, these applications. And I don't find, on the Google list, I don't find a corporation called Sponge Docks Merchants Association. It's possible that this isn't even an incorporated entity. And human beings can just be nonprofit on their own. So, and many times, you might say, "Well, he was never brought to our attention." Slaughtermore, Louis Jack Tappett that owns the Sponge Exchange, he doesn't want kiosses down there by anybody, George Belairis or strangers. Uh, Alas doesn't want them down there for serving food. My neighbor across the street that has the Fudge Factory that's here to speak, he doesn't want them because they're competing against him. And for all the very same reasons, the board turned down George Belairis. Those same reasons apply on this end of the dock.
Mr. Hula. Uh, your, your time is up. I'm trying to let you wrap up.
All right.
If you would do that for me, sir, I would definitely...
All I'm pointing out to you is, is that everybody's not in agreement with this closing down of thirty to thirty-nine times a year. And it's boring on inverse condemnation. And these applications are not properly filled out, and they're violating your own statute as to the amount of them that can be had. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, I, I just say that for one thing is that, uh, some of the things that you talked about, Mr. Hula, that I don't like to respond, um, to this, but, uh, this board has not even looked at, uh, the Belairis property at, at all in what Mr. Belairis has asked for, so it's a little unfair to say that this board has denied something that's never come before us. Uh, yes, it came before a city, uh, committee, but that was that committee. It was not this board. Uh, I don't know if the city manager has anything that he wants to say or anyone else in, in relationship to, uh, this item. And anybody else that want to speak to this, uh, before I close, I don't want it to be, you know, we wait two, three minutes and then we come, because when I close, I'm not gonna allow anybody to come back up and have public comments. So if you'd like to speak on this issue, sir, please do.
My name's Jeff Rorth. I live at eight oh three North Walton. Um, I do the Fudge Factory. My family's been there for twenty-five years. Uh, and over the years, I've complained to the former, uh, president of the Sponge Docks Merchants Association that these festivals, they hurt business. They don't, uh, they don't bring people back. My anecdotal evidence is that my repeat customers will leave the docks with their fam- friends and family and take their money with them and not spend it in our stores if there's a festival. And so it just seems that, uh, and to be honest, these things are very much like a flea market. They're the same thing over and over. They're, if, if you all had the time to spend, uh, a couple hours on the docks on a weekend when there is a festival versus when there isn't at, at the same approximate time, I think you would find if you picked a, a store, any store, and just did a customer count, you would see that these festivals, uh, they really hurt our businesses. They're not any good for us, and, and over the last four years, there's just been an astronomical increase in the festivals where the street is just closed continually. Uh, and it's just, it's really, it's not good for us. It really isn't. So I, I really think that, uh, the, the Merchant Association is, is really usurped their, our voices down there and are, are leading you down the wrong road as far as continually closing the street. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Welcome, Commissioner Tarpan.
Thank you. Um, I just had a question for Mr. Belairis. If you could cite that, uh, ordinance again. Or, um, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Hula. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments, anyone else? Uh, Vice Mayor.
Uh, yes, a question that I have is, this application was submitted by the association for the merchants down at the Sponge Docks. Aren't you all part of the association? Aren't you being represented by the same association? So we do have two different associations? Well, can you?
I think I can. Uh, just let me answer that for you.
All right.
Um, there's a large number of people on the Sponge Docks who are not members of the Sponge Docks Association.
Still gives me the question is, the, the association was created so it can actually work together and providing and bring customers to the, to the Sponge Docks and to increase your businesses. Uh, I, I don't see why is this misunderstanding or mis- the confusion that goes on down there not being informed while the, all the, uh, all the festivals are going on. And vote against it. Yes. Would you please go up there? When we approach, uh, there's a man named David Guchman, okay? He listed on the application but didn't give his last name. First thing he tells me, "I, I don't represent the association." And I says, "Well, your name is on the application." By the way, you wanna square me on those? Instead of me just talking?
No.
Okay.
We believe that you were...
All right. Okay. I says, "Well, huh, if you don't represent them, your name's on the application. Who else am I gonna talk to?" "Well, I have to get together with the association, see what they think." "But I'm going to New York." I says, "Well, when you get back, I'll talk to you." "When he comes back, I haven't talked to him yet." "Huh? I come down to your, uh, special event board, and they say, 'Well, when people file applications, we have to turn them in.'" I said, "Well, who do I get to talk to?" Because we wanna get together and try to discuss when they can have them, how many, you know, and not just open-ended. And, uh, what are you gonna do about the parking lots? Work toward it? Well, at the beginning, they were getting these applications approved with no problem. So they didn't even care to talk to us. Now that they're getting a little bit ecstatic, and maybe this board just might turn down one of these applications, I satisfied my need by getting Mr. Lacouris or whoever's in charge of traffic to try to see if we could work something out about the parking lot, okay? But I wasn't able to solve the problem of the gift shop that's selling the same thing as the stranger from Newport Richie has right in front of them. We were more, we were more like something like a parade or music and something to bring business, and that the merchants do the selling. And if we're gonna have kiosses out there, we merchants put them out. But you don't get any response from that group of people when they know they can go to City Hall and shut you down, and they have no say so. Now, once you turn them down, they'll be calling us and try to work something out. In fact, the letter that comes out from your special event board says, "Contact so-and-so and see if you can work out any of your differences." Yeah, but when you make the telephone call, they don't respond. Now, I've been around here, walking around, trying to talk to agencies here. I've talked to, uh, Tom quite often over there. I talked to, uh, Rodney and, uh, Renee. They put their hands up in the air and say, "Well, we'll tell the city manager about it." But the city manager scolded me back there in the right-hand corner the other day for even talking about it. So what else can I do but come and tell the commission about it? I'm letting you know that everybody's not for it. That's number one. And the people are here, and evidently, something's also happening uptown evidently because of, uh, and I don't know what, uh, the meat market's prob- but it's probably similar. We're not making money. Some of us are completely closed down. My parking lot, if you close the, the east side of Duganese, you'll have a war down there because you closed all those parking lots down. And, uh, you're, they're completely out of business, just like I am. But, uh, we're, we're, we're taking property rights away. But I'm not applying to build anything. I'm just trying to open up my parking...
I wanna be fair to Vice Mayor and his question, but I, I'm not gonna open it up for you to have another chance.
I've made...
Maybe, I, because I fully understand what you're saying. I mean, if he has a question, he wants you to answer that, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. But I don't want it to be, uh, another opportunity to go through what you've already told.
I went to Tom, and I ended up having a conversation with Mr., uh, Lacouris. And I made a phone call to Commissioner Alahouzis.
Thank you for answering, Mr. Lacouris.
So I tried. We tried.
Basically, in his beginning, he finally got around to the point that his issue has been solved, but, uh, several times, I think the past event, they made an agreement with them, and they paid Mr. Hula for some of the money, um, for that event. For this event, we had Tom Punction, Ed Miller, as you see, go down there and devise a plan to keep the parking lot open. I think the, the gist of his argument here because it certainly isn't about his lot because we've made an accommodation. We're gonna talk later on about downtown, is there any accommodations we can make for the people affected there. We're having the same conversation. For this one, they did a traffic pattern where his lot could be filled and then closed when his lot's filled, and obviously, no one else can park there, be closed, and monitored, and, uh, safety from the crowd, so his situation was solved. But this is basically one of the same arguments we're gonna hear before, you know? gonna hear before, you know, um, about these festivals and closing the street. Is it good for the city, good for the docks, good for downtown or not? And you're gonna have some one way, some another way. I think dealing with the Sponge Docks, we may have some difference of individual events for these type of these crowd shows that come in. It might be an issue for the future to talk about these- these type of crowd shows. Um, not in this case because I, you know, obviously you need to approve this one. We're in a new year, this is the first one of the year, so however many days it should have to do, this is the first of the new year, so we need to approve this, but we can have a philosophical of the type of events that close the whole street. I can tell you that for the Night of the Islands and other things, we were asked to open up and to open it up, which would close down to Roosevelt for that event too. And the reason we were asked to is cause the merchants, some merchants wanted to spread down the street and have them involved. I didn't allow that and it stayed the same because I knew about the effect of some other people on the west end. And so, you've got a philosophical difference of people, especially on the west end, you know, do we wanna close or not? I didn't extend Night of the Island, which made some unhappy. I'm sure it made these people happy that I didn't extend it. I left it to go between Hope Street and Athens. So, so where we may talk about in the future, um, and for these type of crowd shows, they have scheduled and planned to do for a year of these type of events, but we may talk to these things. We're strictly an event planner who comes in and brings the different chip. We may talk and need to talk about the rest of them that are coming up for the year and, you know, what we need to do then, where they should be set and stuff for- for a later course of action. But again, you know, you're gonna have the same thing about the people who don't want it and the mer- the merchants who say they do want it. But for this one, the first of the year, uh, you need to approve it. We've made a combination from Mr. Hoolis. Maybe some of the other shops down there that don't, that don't want them. Obviously, we, you know, don't have an, uh, way to do it on this one, but, you know, we can talk about that in future times, but you need to approve this one. Well, thank you for that. Uh, the other thing I say, and you- you have a seat there, Mr. Hoolis, if you like, uh, is that I- it's my hope, now, I'm not sure, that the Sponge Dock Merchants Association doesn't meet, you know, late at night and- and don't let anybody know that they're gonna meet. So that when they are looking at planning these type of events, is that that dialogue goes on there in relationship to the businesses. Because for me, as one individual that's sitting up here, I'm not gonna know, I'm gonna believe that everybody or most of the people are satisfied with it. I'm not even gonna look for one hundred percent percent of the people because that's never gonna happen. And it's- it's not us, the city, making any money on it. We do it, we approve it because it's our belief that it's gonna be good for the businesses. That's it. Now, is it every business? No. And I've said before and I say now, you know, some people have, if they don't make a dollar that day, they are very, very upset. They don't think about the dollar they might make the next day, you know? So, for me, I would hope that the next time the Sponge Dock Merchants Association meet, y'all have that dialogue as to what the city manager talked about, the type of events, those type of things, so that we're not using a lot of time up here and we're still at- at same place that we was. We know that there are a couple of businesses that's not satisfied. You know, a couple of them. I'm, and I see, I know whether you're exercising or what, but I'm not gonna open up for public comments again. Uh, so, right with that, I'm looking for a motion as far as approval. Anybody wanna take this off and defer, that's up to them, but I- I don't like to go ahead and move this, uh, agenda along as far as the consent agenda since no item was pulled, so.
Chair, let him take the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tarpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Suttery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes.
Yes. It won't be back on- on our docket unless somebody is bringing something forward for us to approve. So, what I'm saying is that if y'all have some issues with what is being brought forth, you should be talking with the Sponge Dock Merchants Association before it come this way. We won't know until it gets to us. So, there's nothing that I know of right now that we have to- to look at. The next item that we have on our agenda is special consent, uh, item number sixteen, award RFP number one three zero zero two three dash P dash CM insurance program life and long-term disability. Are you handling this, uh?
Jane's on her- her- her way out, uh.
Uh, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, I don't have a lot to add to the recommendation this evening other than, um, if you should, uh, award this, um, this RFP, the city stands to save over ninety-three hundred dollars in the next eight months and rest of the fiscal year, or almost fourteen thousand dollars in the next twelve months. The, uh, the rankings, uh, they- they say it all.
Does anyone have any questions? Any, uh, public comments on this item? Chair, let him take the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tarpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Suttery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Thank you for this. Uh, item number seventeen, renew RFP number zero eight zero zero eight six Stormwater Engineering Services Continuing Contract.
Mr. Robertson's here to, uh, to talk about that, even though I get excited about Stormwater because my game city manager is something to least about, so I said, "I'll take that." When he said, "This is something I wanna do something about and plus we have money in that area on the few planes," so he'll tell you about what- what our plans are for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lacouris. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager, and, uh, this item is a request for renewal of the existing Stormwater Engineering Services Continuing Contract. This is the fourth and final renewal of a five-year contract that was, um, competitively advertised through an RFP. Uh, when this contract expires, we'll- we'll go back for a, um, uh, second competitive contract, could be the same engineer with, um, could not be, will all be a competitive process. Uh, requesting, um, five hundred thousand dollars as in similar years, uh, as in the previous years, and I'm here for questions.
Uh, Mr. Tarpenny?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Robertson, I see in the backup some examples of previous projects we've completed with this, uh, this bid, and I was just curious if you had, uh, slated other projects that we'll be looking to this year for these types, for these funds?
Sure.
If you could name some of them.
Yeah, sure can. Um, the majority of this money goes towards the projects that are identified in the Stormwater Action Plan, and, uh, the latest version of that is on the city website. Um, that is actually undergoing, it's quarterly update and it'll be updated within the next week or so. But those projects include, um, major work on Penn Street, uh, coming up, um, Spruce Street between Levis and Gross, um, Island Avenue and Vista Place, Jasmine Avenue and Lime Street, and, uh, it's gonna cover some of the ongoing work in this fiscal year at Island Drive. We have a project at Distant Avenue and Center Street. Um, we're addressing an issue on, uh, Earl Street and Distant Avenue between Spruce and Live Oak. Uh, those are the major projects that are coming up in- in this contract year.
Sure.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions as well? Any public comments on this item? Chair, let him take the motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tarpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Suttery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, next we go to, uh, item number eighteen, uh, renew RFP number zero nine zero, zero nine zero one zero zero dash P, uh, job ordering contract.
Again, this is for, um, and Mr. Jack is here, if we have any specific questions. Mainly, uh, these people are used, uh, a lot of times in emergencies, um, water line breaks, as you can see, some of the projects that happen. Um, usually it's when we need people, equipment, and, uh, in many cases, we have to get those people in fast to assist with. Um, the only change in this one from the past year is there was two companies we used, um, but one company wanted some price increases, the other one didn't. Um, so, we are asking to go with the one that didn't ask for any price increases and again, they more specialized in the, uh, underground utility type emergencies that we're gonna do and we really don't have. The other one is in building construction, really the- the need that we imagine, um, is probably gonna be in the underground portion. So, it's- it's budgeted for, you know, we're asking not to exceed three seventy-five. Last year was three hundred and twenty-five, and again, depending on emergencies, depending on things happen, that could fluctuate, but of course, we'll only use the money as the, uh, projects and the, uh, the, and the issues come up that we need to use it. But it's- it's been very successful, allowed us to bring the people and the equipment in, uh, when we've had problems to get things done.
The only question I have is, what kind of response do we get? Is there a time, uh, uh, expectancy on how long it'll take for them to respond or?
Usually this is, if you wanna ask it.
Once we prepare the scope of work, they come in with their, uh, cost estimates and they're pretty much immediately on the job.
Where are they traveling from, here locally or they go?
Uh, Tampa.
Tampa, that's not too far. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Any, uh, public comments on this item? Chair, let him take the motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Tarpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Suttery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next we go to ordinance and resolutions. Item number nineteen, resolution twenty thirteen dash zero four, application twelve sixty-four, uh, Canelli Casanino, uh, conditional use application for serious two C O P alcohol license at four fifty-five Athens Street in the T four A residential retail office zoning district. This is quasi-judicial. I'm not sure if you wanna do the rest of those.
Yeah, where the next three, the next three are. Quasi, uh, item twenty is resolution twenty thirteen dash zero one, application twelve dash sixty-three, Burkett rezoning application on Keystone Road. And item twenty-one is resolution twenty thirteen dash two, uh, application twelve dash fifty-two Serenity Village conditional use application. I mention all these together because they're all conditional use, um, or- or all quasi-judicial, um, matters, so, um, what I'm gonna discuss now applies to all those matters. Um, what the board is doing is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The commission is acting in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. That means that it's the commission's, not the commission's function here to create law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. Um, in a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required, or the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and then apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances to make a legal decision regarding the application. And the commission may only consider evidence, uh, at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the evidence, um, demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. The procedure that we will follow at these three quasi-judicial hearings is as follows. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at the hearing must give their names and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at the hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will go first and present whatever evidence, uh, it desires, and the applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present whatever evidence and testimony the applicant cares to present, and city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant. At that point, we will then allow members of the public opposing the application to have an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, then members of the public in support of the application will have the same opportunity. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a, uh, pre-opposing argument or summary and, if necessary, presenting rebuttal evidence, uh, after which the city staff will have the same opportunity. Following that, the commission will consider the matter, and at that point in the proceedings, commissioners may ask questions of the witnesses. Following that, a motion will be made and a vote will be taken. So, the first matter before the board is resolution, uh, the commission is, uh, resolution twenty thirteen dash oh four, resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application twelve dash sixty-four for a two C O P on-premise consumption of beer and wine license for property located at four five five Athens Street, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Before we proceed with this matter, I'd like anyone who intends to testify in any of these quasi-judicial proceedings, and by testify, I mean gets up at the microphone and say anything, to raise your right hand and take the following oath. You have to, you have to take an oath in order to testify. Do you swear or affirm, uh, that the testimony you will give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I have af- positive affirmations all around. I would ask, um, for any ex parte communications that the commission may have on this first matter. There are none.
Thank you. This is application twelve dash sixty-four for Canelli Casanino. Uh, this is a two C O P license, uh, which is a on-premise consumption of beer and wine for property at four fifty-five Athens Street. Uh, the applicant proposes to open a cafe that also serves, uh, beer and wine. Um, this is a fairly common, um, type of use in the Sponge Docks area. There are no issues with the distance separation between schools and churches, um, the, uh, and it does meet the, uh, requirements of the Land Development Code and all other aspects. The, uh, planning and zoning board did review this and recommend approval by a vote of five oh. Um, there was some general discussion about hours of operation and, um, who the expected patrons of the- of the cafe may be, uh, which really was not, uh, not of relevance to- to the, uh, to the application, uh, presented tonight. Um, staff recommendation is to approve the application as it's presented, and, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Does the applicant care to cross-examine, uh, Ms. Vincent or make a presentation? The applicant passes on the opportunity. At this point, we will ask any members of the public to oppose the application, to step forward and state their piece. Seeing none, are there any members of the public in support of the application? Nope. Um, does the applicant care to make the closing statement or summary? Applicant passes again. Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
She passes. Uh, it is appropriate for commission consideration.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Hoolis?
I have a free question.
Come here, Mr. Tarpenny.
Ms. Vincent, did a two C O P exist in this location prior to this application?
Uh, my understanding is that yes, and indeed, it's when one that's expired, it hasn't been active for- for a while, so we're basically reinstating something that was there before.
No approval?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Tarpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Suttery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahouzis?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, item number twenty is ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero one, application twelve sixty-three, uh, Burkett, uh, rezoning application for twelve point eight one acres on Keystone Road from, uh, R one hundred single-family residential to R seventy A single-family residential first reading.
This is an ordinance and it must have two readings. Ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero one, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida for twelve point eight one acres of property lying in the south one half of Section Eight, Township Twenty Seven, South Main sixteen East, generally described as lying one hundred feet southeast of the intersection of Keystone Road and Melon Street from R one hundred single-family residential district to R seventy A single-family residential district, providing for finding and providing for an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero one. The second reading will be held on January twenty-second, twenty thirteen. This was published in the St- in the Tampa Bay Times by title only with a map on December second, two thousand and twelve, and it will be published again on January twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? None? Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is application twelve dash sixty-three. Uh, the applicant is Frank Burkett. This is a rezoning application, rezoning property from R one hundred single-family residential. This is a rezoning application, rezoning property from R one hundred, single-family residential to R seventy A, also a single-family residential. Uh, the property is located on Keystone Road, between Keystone Road and Lake Tarpon. It contains, um, about twelve point eight acres. Um, the, uh, basically, the applicant is seeking to rezone the property to really to take, take advantage of the reduced side yards, front yards, and rear yards that are present in the R seventy A zoning districts. R one hundred zoning district is the, um, really the most restrictive zoning district that we have. Um, the, the applicant has provided a preliminary site layout or subdivision layout that really, um, not, shouldn't be entered in the testimony, but they did provide it by way, you know, for explanation of what they intend to do. Um, the effective density that they are proposing is three point three five dwelling units per acre, uh, which is well below the five dwelling units per acre that's allowed under the existing land use. We're not requesting a density increase under land use. Um, they're simply, uh, requesting to change the, um, uh, the zoning to take advantage of some somewhat reduced front side and rear yards to allow a, um, somewhat larger property to be built on the property. Um, the zoning district is in compliance with the future land use map category of, of residential law, so there are no issues with compliance with the conquerance of plan. Um, under public correspondence, um, we have received, um, some inquiries from one of the residences of Hillside Landings, uh, which is the townhome, the Johnson Townhome Development. Uh, they were concerned about the reduction in the required rear yard from thirty feet to twenty feet, um, along, you know, the properties that, proposed properties that would be adjoining their, um, their development. And then one person did speak in opposition at, uh, of the amendment at the planning and zoning board hearing. Um, again, opposition being reflected as, uh, the reduction in the required rear yard, reducing it from thirty to twenty, um, and the potential, I believe, property line conflict that really is not the bearing of, uh, or said doesn't really have bearing on this application. That's a dispute between property owners, that there is a, uh, property line conflict. Uh, the planning and zoning board reviewed this on December seventeenth and recommended approval by a four one vote. Um, staff recommendation is to approve the request, um, you know, with respect to the reduction in the rear yard requirement, um, that, the rear yard requirement only applies to the primary structure, um, even if the zoning did not change. Pool, pool screen enclosures and whatnot would still be allowed to set back to the five-foot, you know, rear property line as they would normally. Uh, so that's, it would still be in, you know, um, allowed under the both zoning districts, that doesn't change. The, um, and the rear yard that is being proposed under the R seventy A zoning district is the same as the adjoining properties, um, at Hillside Landings. So, it is, you know, an equal setback for, that required for both types of properties. Uh, with that, uh, staff recommendation is to approve this as it's presented, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
This is the applicant. Do you care to make a presentation? Okay. Um, at this point, are there any members of the public opposing the application? If so, come forward to the microphone and...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Ron Little. I'm the president of the Hillside Landing Homeowners Association. Uh, I've had several inquiries from members of our homeowners association in regards to what this lady has, uh, has, uh, explained. We are concerned with the proximity of the rear of the structures that will be built because right now, our, our homes, we have twelve, uh, twelve townhomes that are really just almost next to the property line. If the owner of this new development, uh, proposes to build them, uh, as close to, uh, the property line, uh, we're gonna have, uh, problem with noise, and, uh, it just, uh, is very inconvenient for our people who have been there. We've been putting, putting up with the noise for Tarpon Road for three, almost three years now, and now we're gonna have another development going on. Uh, what I would like to request is that, uh, to put some type of time limit on the development of the project. Uh, I wouldn't like to see it go on for a number of years, uh, and inconvenience our owners. Um, other than that, um, if there's something available to tell me that, uh, the back of the properties aren't gonna be abutting ours, uh, we probably wouldn't have a problem with it. I understand that, uh, it's a good idea to encourage development in Tarpon Springs. It adds to the tax base, um, but at the same time, our homes, uh, originally were priced at close to eight hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, the fact that we don't know exactly what type of structures are gonna be built next to ours, uh, our owners are concerned with property values. And, um, so, I don't have a lot of, uh, the information that I probably should have. Uh, I, I went down and had a copy of the preliminary plans, uh, and as I see, it looks like it's gonna be, gonna be a very crowded development, uh, and, uh, I guess that's all my concerns. Thanks, sir.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Here's your chance.
Yes, my name is Wayne Retkey. I'm treasurer and secretary of the Hillside Landing Homeowners Association. Uh, we were concerned, as Mr. Little said, um, of the fourteen, not twelve owners, eleven have complained about it. I don't know if they've talked to, specifically, I know we've talked to this lady. Uh, we were told that, uh, um, the building itself would be thirty feet from the wall. Now, seventy makes it twenty feet from the wall. Uh, Will and I would bring it to within five feet of the wall. Is there a possibility of having a tree barrier in between, or something between the wall? Because if you're five feet away from looking into bedrooms and kitchens and bathrooms, it's really not a great aesthetic. Um, I don't know how we can get around that. Again, many of these people have paid close to eight hundred thousand for our houses. Are we putting two hundred thousand other houses next door? Is this gonna bring down the, the general tax basis for the whole thing? Can we, can we file for tax reduction if this brings the neighborhood? Half timer.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, uh, wish to speak in opposition? Are any, are there any members of the public, uh, who wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, does the applicant care to make a closing statement or summary?
Good evening. My name is Frank Burkett. I'm the applicant. Um, to address some of the concerns about the, uh, type of homes that are going in there, we're, um, working with national builders. The, the price ranges are gonna be probably from five hundred thousand to a million dollars. So, I think you get assured that your, your property values are gonna go up. Um, the, the way the properties are, the houses are gonna be laid out is really market indicative of what the national home builders and the market is, um, requesting now. It's almost, you know, for their exact request. Um, as far as the, um, abutting, the houses about abutting straight up, it's the, the property is heavily wooded as it is, a lot of trees. We have intended to go ahead and keep as many of those trees as possible, especially, uh, abutting, um, property owners to the west. So, I think, um, you know, we're, every intention of be a good neighbor. That's how we develop. So, I think that'll be, it'll give you some assurance what we can have to do there.
Yeah. And I would point out that some of that stuff is really issues that may arise at site plan. All right, um, Ms. Vincent?
Uh, I just do wanna clarify for the record, based on some of the comments. Um, the rear yard requirement is not five feet. And that only applies to pools and pool screen enclosures, and that is the standard throughout all of our, uh, single-family subdivisions. The rear yard to the primary structure, to your bedrooms and kitchens and things like that, uh, under the R seventy-eight district is twenty feet. Thank you.
Okay, is the matter appropriate for commission consideration? Do you want to have any questions?
I have one question to ask, but I'm ready to make a motion at the same time, when you're ready.
We intend a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Vincent? This rezoning will have any, uh, effect to the implementation on for a smart code?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is that re- uh, rezoning gonna have any effect when it comes to, uh, implementing the other smart code?
No, sir.
Oh, can we just start, Pam? Thank you. Um, Ms. Vincent, just out of curiosity, what was the descending vote? What was the discussion from that person on the planning and zoning?
Uh, as best as I recall from watching the, the tape, um, it was just a, I think, just a philosophical disagreement with, and wanting to, you know, keep it just like it was. And there were, I, I, I can't really say much more than that.
Okay. Um, and then my other comment would be, just as, as these gentlemen come back for, like, a site plan approval process, if we could just put something in the file that, um, just a note, um, highlighting a, if you do a little bit of a buffer zone between the existing residents?
Well, we'll try to make that happen, absolutely.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Mr. Terrapini?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Flattery? Yes. Vice Mayor LaHooze?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
All right, last but not least, is resolution twenty thirteen dash zero two, resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application twelve dash fifty-two for the expansion of an existing family care home to a community residential home for eight residents for property located at four six one South Florida Avenue, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. Are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed? I see none. Uh, Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is application twelve dash fifty-two for Serenity Village. Uh, the property is located at four sixty-one South Florida Avenue. This, uh, this is an existing family care home, which is a, um, uh, care home for six residents or less, which is permitted by right in our single-family zoning districts. Uh, the applicant is now coming in to, um, uh, add two additional beds essentially, uh, which takes it up to eight, eight residents under our, um, Conferencing of Zoning and Land Development Code. That puts it into a conditional use review, uh, so that's what they're here asking for tonight. Um, they're not actually expanding the building or the foot front of the house. Um, they are simply working within the existing structure, uh, to accommodate two additional residents. Um, the, uh, the, just for, by way of explanation, the, uh, the applicant's clients are developmentally disabled, um, which, and their facility is regulated under the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. Um, uh, just, and again, the definition of a family care home is a dwelling unit licensed to serve clients of the Department of Health and General Services, which provides a group living environment for up to six unrelated residents who operate as the functional equivalent of a family, including sub-supervision and care by supportive staff as may be necessary to meet the physical, emotional, and social needs of the residents. Essentially, the community residential home is defined, um, the same, but it is for, uh, seven to fourteen residences, and it does put it into the conditional use review category. Um, under our standards for review, um, there really are, um, from a staff perspective, we don't see anything about this application that ri- it rises to the level of a, you know, or, you know, an, an issue of compatibility when you, in fact, these must, you know, let the City of Tarpon explain, um, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, what types of things can and cannot be considered in terms of compatibility for these types of uses. But essentially, if, if the impacts to the neighborhood are no more, um, severe, if you will, than what you could expect from a large, single-family house of, of, of residents living there, police calls, fire calls, things of that nature, then really, it doesn't, you know, those are the, you can't consider those types of impacts. Impacts that would require extreme amounts of additional staff, you know, um, on-call people, things of that nature that could potentially impact adjoining properties. Um, those are the types of things that would be considered. So, in all aspects, this application, when we reviewed it, um, did not rise to that level of, of creating a, an issue of compatibility. The, um, and the application does then, you know, it meets all the other requirements of the Land Development Code, uh, to be licensed as a community residential home. Planning and zoning board did review this at their last meeting, and they did recommend approval by a five oh vote. Um, again, the, there was no, uh, there was no public comment at the hearing. Uh, you do have two letters of opposition from nearby property owners talking about general nuisance, uh, types of, of, uh, concerns that they've, that they've experienced at the, um, around the property. Um, but, uh, again, no one testified at the planning and zoning board in opposition or support to the application. Um, I'll stop there. The staff recommendation is to approve the application, and, um, I think the residents, the applicants did a pretty good job of explaining their operations, so I'm gonna let them, at the appropriate time, if you have questions for me, but let them get their testimony in, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant care to make a presentation? All right. Uh, are there any members of the public who oppose the application?
Mayor Archie, and, uh, members of the commission, thank you. Uh, my name is James Stevens, Jr. Um, I live at, um, thirteen thirty-four Sunset Court, which is the, um, cul-de-sac street that is up on the other side of this particular property. Uh, my home is, is exactly across the street diagonally, uh, from the subject, uh, residence. Um, having been at this location myself for about twenty-three years, uh, I recall all aspects of, um, uh, neighboring with this facility since the commencement of its, uh, of its business. Uh, and it is anything but conducive to, uh, normal and reasonable standards, in, in my opinion. And I base that essentially on, uh, three essential fronts. Uh, there is, and, uh, and always has been, uh, a parking issue as a result of staff members, uh, that work there, uh, family members who are there, uh, to visit their, uh, their, uh, residents. Um, and, uh, and apparently vehicles from a, another managerial company that, that have meetings. Uh, they don't utilize, uh, to hardly any degree, the, um, uh, the actual driveway resources that are there. They park along the street. Um, I've had damage to my own, uh, irrigation system on my property as a result of them improperly, uh, pulling onto, uh, uh, onto that, uh, land. Uh, at the same time, uh, it, it necessitated in, in my own personalness, and, uh, since I had a, a small twenty-one foot boat with a raised teatop that, uh, I literally couldn't take out anymore because the, if you look at the street, Sunset Court, uh, there's heavy natural tree barrier, uh, on the northern side of that street. Uh, and if you put parked cars along the other side, there is no, no way whatsoever to get a boat like mine in and out. Uh, I had to surrender my, my right and privilege to keep my boat in my driveway because, uh, there were several times in bringing the boat back in from the water, I could not even pull onto my street, uh, because of the, uh, the blocking. Uh, second, uh, issue is this, the constant, ongoing disruptive behavior. Uh, and this ties into a very strong lack of managerial control, uh, of the residents that are there, uh, uh, due to staffing, uh, issues, uh, that are there. Um, one resident, uh, recently was allowed to be outside of the facility for extended periods of time. He stalked my teenage daughter for the better part of two years. He would wait in the yard for my, for my daughter upon recognizing her car, and then walk over across the street onto my property and engage in conversation, uh, with her. My daughter at times would see him outside, call me on her cell phone if I was at home, and, and ask me to meet her in the driveway because she was afraid to, uh, to, to come in. Uh, there is, uh, a lot of residents that I, I believe, without permission, uh, in fact, I know without permission, leave those premises, start walking up and down the street. The staff makes every effort that they can to restrain them and get them to return into the residence, but as you know, that's a, it's a difficult situation for, for anybody to forcefully move someone that's a hundred and fifty to, to two hundred pounds against their will. What you end up with is a, a protracted situation of just constant screaming, yelling, profanities, uh, and, and very unfortunately, uh, intermixed with enormous amount of racial slurs. Uh, it's completely inappropriate, uh, not, not just in, in, in this area, but, uh, or, or the area where I live in, but, uh, but anywhere at all. Uh, apparently, a lot of the windows are left open. Uh, residents, uh, uh, many times scream at people passing by. My wife happens to be one of them, particularly on weekends when she leaves the house to go on to her, in her, uh, walk, run jogging routine. Um, uh, again, extreme profanities. Um, there's just, uh, an overall lack of management. Uh, just a few weeks ago, the, the irrigation system was running there for forty-eight hours consecutively. Uh, I finally went over, knocked on the door, and explained that this is a violation, not only of, of city code, but it's detrimental to the commonwealth field that we all are drawing our irrigation systems from. Um, I, I, I do acknowledge that they were able to handle and rectify that, but there were staff members that were arriving at the beginning of their shifts and leaving their shifts, never taking any notice that these sprinklers were not being turned off. Um, uh, you're, uh, you need to wrap up your- Okay. Uh, it's, 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 it's those reasons and, and actually, uh, uh, mirrored several others that I, I, I could and am willing to discuss, uh, which is why I would, uh, believe and recommend that this is not an appropriate, uh, situation to simply add to the, uh, to the membership of the residency in that, uh, in that particular facility. Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support? Seeing none, does the applicant care to make a closing statement or summary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Uh, my name is Gary Hartfield. I am president and owner of, uh, Serenity Village, uh, group home that, uh, resides there, at four sixty-one, uh, South Florida Avenue. Um, in the interest of being a good neighbor and in the interest of certainly being diplomatic, I've noted, uh, the concerns that were listed. And, um, I've never received any of these concerns, um, as the owner of the facility, and, um, in fact, I have no way to really document that these concerns exist, uh, there. I guess you would say speculative in nature. Uh, having to surrender a boat, um, I'm not really sure how to address that. Um, the constant issues, staffing issues, uh, we receive high regards and high marks from our colleagues and agencies, Agency for Persons with Disabilities. Uh, in our years of operation, we have never been cited for any staffing issues. Um, clients being able to leave without permission. Uh, um, again, we gotta understand, these are citizens, individuals with rights, dignity, and respect, and we have to recognize that. Uh, they are developmentally disabled. Uh, we do maintain, uh, eye contact, or at least the ability to see them, uh, if they are outside of the premises unless they have the ability to move about without, uh, staff supervision. Uh, so we have to, based on the state of Florida laws, uh, and our guidelines that dictate how we run our service, uh, we have to respect their rights as individuals and as citizens. Um, the size issue, a hundred and fifty, two hundred pounds. Uh, I'm two hundred and thirty pounds, uh, about six foot, two inches. Hopefully, I don't look intimidating or opposing, uh, to anyone. Um, our clients certainly preserve the right to be, you know, whatever size or, or weight, uh, that God or themselves dictate. So, those, those types of things, racial slurs, uh, again, we're, we're dealing with, and we work with developmentally disabled, uh, individuals. And their best behavior sometimes does not exhibit it. Uh, so, it, we do work with clients that may, uh, exhibit racial, racial slurs. So, that's indeed an integral part of what we do. However, there are thirty thousand individuals on this waiver in the state of Florida. There's another thirty thousand waiting to be served on this waiver. Uh, so if we cannot facilitate housing for them, uh, because of racial slurs or their weight, uh, or not wanting them to actually, uh, move about in the community, uh, then I think we, as a community as a whole, need to address that, uh, personally. Our windows left open, uh, we have a security system, uh, that monitors the premises twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, so, any time that a window is open, it's only to invite in the fresh air. Uh, if the seasons are cold, of course, you don't do that. When the spring comes around, when you're doing spring cleaning, or it's a beautiful day outside, of course, you're able to open the, open the windows and allow the fresh air in. I have not received any incident of consumers, uh, screaming out of a window. And any time there is an incident, uh, that involves a community member or another one of the residents, we have to document that and send that to the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. As you're aware, uh, we are governed by every rule, uh, that falls under Chapter one nineteen Florida Statute of Sunshine law. So, that being said, um, any issues in regards to incidents have been documented, and they are on file with the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. Um, but the lack of manage- the lack of management, um, in the, in the spirit of, of being a good neighbor and being diplomatic, um, I pride myself on, uh, being a good manager and making sure that these individuals, uh, have, uh, full access to their rights and enjoy, uh, their home, because indeed, it is their home. Uh, and the state of Florida, the Developmental Disabilities waiver supports that. Um, irrig- the irrigation that was left on, I believe, uh, our neighbor mentioned for twenty-four, forty-eight hours. Uh, we have a well system, um, that was not, uh, the city, city water system, that's a, a well system that we have, that we maintained there at the facility. So, hopefully, that wasn't, uh, an issue. Uh, so I wanted to, I jotted down the things that kind of stuck out for me, uh, that wanted to provide some tools for reasoning, uh, for those. Are there any other questions that you have as mayor or commission or concern?
They, uh, ask those at the end of, uh, the public proceedings.
Yes.
Ms. Vincent? Is it appropriate for commission consideration at this point?
I, I guess I have, uh, a couple things, uh, Ms. Vincent. One is that, uh, from the change, in fact, you say that they can have up to, uh, from, uh, fourteen, but we're asking that it be conditional upon eight.
Yes, sir.
So that's just stipulated there.
Yes.
I, I guess the other, on the other thing is that, in listening to Mr. Stevens, I don't know whether there's something that could be done that would accommodate, uh, parking. My assumption is that, uh, putting two additional individuals in there, uh, would either necessitate, uh, some different people maybe having to come, maybe they can do it, but, uh, maybe there's just, uh, additional business. So, I, I'm, uh, just kind of concerned as it relates to, uh, the parking issue and, and what can be done in, in relationship to just parking on the street.
There, there really is, uh, if you, if you look at the, uh, the survey that was provided, there is, you know, a, a double-wide concrete driveway on Sunset Court that, um, appears to be able to probably park two D. Um, there's also an additional concrete driveway on the side of the property where you can park probably an additional four or five cars head in. Um, it sounds like the problem that they're experiencing is might, is just a matter of, it's more convenient for people to park on the street. Um, I'm gonna look at the police chief about how we can enforce, you know, the parking situation. Um, I mean, is it a matter of calling if, if, you know, if, you know, parking, you know, if the street's being obstructed, you know, and that's a, that's a police matter for, you know, they, they have appropriate parking, off-street parking to accommodate their needs. Um, but whether or not it's actually being utilized is another question, I guess. That's, that's the, the rub, and perhaps the applicant can speak to that.
Yes, I, I definitely would, uh, like, yeah.
Thank you. The, absolutely, uh, we have, uh, behavioral analysts and psychiatrists and medical doctors that visit, uh, at least once a month, and other support staff, including individuals from the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. Um, indeed, we could make better use of the parking, uh, on Sunset, Sunset, um, the long driveway on Sunset Park or Pointe. Uh, and we can, um, make sure that individuals are parking there and not using the street. And indeed, the street is a little bit more convenient for individuals to use if they're able to access the house immediately. But they also can access the house immediately from the back door, uh, if they were to use the, the parking, uh, in the back, so, or on the side of the house.
Uh, Ms. Vincent, I, I'm not even sure if that can be done conditionally. I, I, uh, definitely would, uh, appreciate that being done towards the parking that would alleviate other concerns as relates to, uh, the neighbors and their, their opportunity to, uh, fully utilize their, uh, properties that, um, the owner and manager would, uh, would do that. But I'm not sure if we can have that as a condition.
City attorney's nodding, yes?
Yeah, I, I think, let me, um, you know, by law, this is considered a residential use. So, some of the concerns expressed, you know, you have to think of this as, okay, this is a, a house with, uh, a family, they keep living in it. So, some of the concerns expressed, you know, are really not so much land use issues as, uh, enforcement issues, you know, blocking the streets and, you know, and I'm not saying this occurs or not, but, you know, the allegation is abusing residents of, of other people in the neighborhood. Those are all law enforcement issues, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't deny a zoning application, uh, for those reasons. But certainly, the issue of parking is something that can be considered, uh, when you're considering a conditional use. And I think, I, I'm not sure how you phrase it, but I, it certainly would be appropriate if the evidence, uh, here convinced you that there were parking issues to play some sort of condition that would address those parking issues.
Well, I, I just say, I'd like to have something that would, basically say that they would park the cars on, on their property. It seems like they have adequate, uh, area there, just that-
It, it requires them to jostle around a little bit and, yeah, to use it. Um, uh, perhaps a condition is basically stating that, um, required, it required, required park, uh, parking of residents and visitors must, no, I don't know what I'm going to do this.
Must where practicable?
No, residents and visitors, or not residents, but, uh, staff and visitors must park in available off-street parking.
Where available?
Where available.
Because again-
Right.
Again, looking at this like it's a residence, you know, think of a, um, a house that has a Christmas party and invites twenty friends, you know?
Right.
So, you've got a situation where you're parking up and down the street. Uh, that certainly would be something that would be consistent with a normal residential use, though it may, I guess, violate some sort of parking regulation in the city or cause some police concerns, so.
Staff and visitors must park on-site.
Where feasible.
When, where, you know? Where feasible.
Uh, uh, to Mr. Larson?
Thank you. Um, I think the, the neighbor, Mr. Stevens, brought up some serious concerns, and I think some of these same concerns were brought up by two other letters that we received, uh, from, I think they were both from different neighbors than Mr. Stevens. Um, I, I guess it's not really, some of those concerns are not necessarily relevant for this particular agenda item, but nonetheless, I think there are various serious concerns that need, need to be looked at. Um, I wanted to hear from Chief Coach and what, uh, police history we have, what police reports, what, you know, what, what have we been involved with? What reports have come in, uh, in regards to the property?
I don't have that data. I can look it up. But, um, obviously, like any other situation, if the neighbor's having a problem, if they're stalking, or bothering, or anything like that, please make it a call. And we would handle the investigation like we would any other investigation, whether it's parking, stalking, or noise complaints, or whatever it may be. But I don't have, um, I don't have in front of me all the call activities addressed.
You're not aware of an abnormally large amount of call activity at that address?
I, I can't answer that. We handle eight thousand calls a year if you have to call, I don't think so.
And someone could-
It doesn't stick out.
And someone wasn't able to, to bring their, their boat in, they could simply call, uh, the police department to have that looked into? I mean, they, they should have enough clearance in order to do so.
Absolutely. Whether it's a code issue, police issue, um, that's what we do. And, you know, every case is a judgment call based on what's going on.
Mr. Yakavone, a- a- as I said, it's my understanding, and I wonder if you can confirm, it's my understanding that even though I find these concerns to be very serious, that they're not necessarily relevant to this particular agenda item?
Um, other than the parking concerns, I, I would, I would say that they're not relevant to the land use decision you're making.
Thank you.
Could we just stop there?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vincent, is the, is the neighborhood solely residential with the exception of this particular piece of property?
Yes.
Um, I too had concerns, um, with the parking that, uh, the mayor mentioned. Um, is there no requirement for additional parking?
There, let me get the phone for you. Um, it requires, under, what, what our code has for, for community residential homes is one space for four residents, so that would be two, and then one space for two non-resident staff, and that would be, you know, not free, you know, because they have rotating staff.
Right.
So, my understanding is they have two to three, uh, staff members present twenty-four hours a day.
All day.
So, they clearly have enough off-street parking to support that.
Sure. Um, so basically, I think that Mr. Stevens gave a pretty compelling, uh, testimony in the sense that I believe, and I have no reason to believe that he's not necessarily telling the truth. So, I think, Mr. Yakavone, I'll look to you in the sense that Mr. Stevens has a right to, to leisure enjoyment of his property, correct? And, and it appears that that's being, um, altered here.
Well, again, I don't think the concerns of the behavior of the residents are, are relevant to the land use decision you're making. Um, he certainly has the, the, he has the same right as every other resident in a residential neighborhood to, um, the unobstructed use of the street.
So, the issue only lies with the parking?
In my view, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, if invited by the commission?
I'd like to invite Mr. Stevens.
Say you can come up to Stevens' house, uh-
There's some serious voids in some of the, um, logic that's going around, quite honestly. Uh, with respect to the parking, you're not taking into consideration any of the vehicular traffic that is also added to the burden of, of the area by family visitation, okay? All that has been excluded. When you add that in, which occurs at, 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 you know, obviously irregular times, uh, it, it, I, I, I think it's a larger burden than perhaps what, what, um, some or, or most of you are, are, are thinking. Um, uh, quite honestly, my biggest concern, and, and, and in all respect to Mr. Hartfield, I have not ever seen you, sorry, anywhere on the front premises. I don't, I don't know how many hours you spend there, you know, in a typical week. Um, as a legally disabled individual myself, um, I'm home quite a bit, barring visits to, um, medical appointments. Um, I can tell you that I'm a firsthand witness to the events that, uh, that I'm describing. And if there was one aspect of the entire- And if there was one aspect of the entire situation that I could, uh, uh, ask to be alleviated, uh, it, 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 it would be some way to curtail the absolutely disruptive behavior, obscene language, and the, uh, uh, seemingly endless episodes of, of, of residents that are leaving, uh, the premises. Let me tell you firsthand, these are mobile individuals. They walk, with the exception of maybe a, a couple, uh, that I haven't seen, these people are mobile. And I've gone to the, to, to the staff on numerous times and, and addressed the parking situation. And I've asked, why aren't you utilizing the depth of the, of the, uh, single-wide driveway that is on the premises? And I was told repeatedly, that's a recreation area, and that's where, sometimes the residents will come out and play basketball and things like that. We're not ever going to park there. So by virtue of that, uh, answer, if that's the philosophy, if that's the way the, the premises are managed, uh, that's never going to be utilized. When you add two more residents, you basically are, are increasing everything in proportion by, by twenty-five percent. Uh, and, and, and this is a situation that's, uh, you know, that's, that's really just li- literally out of hand. Also to clarify, because I felt perhaps, Mr. Hartsville, you didn't understand my comments, I have absolutely nothing but the highest respect for these types of facilities and the care that they provide for the residents. And my remark regarding the weight of these individuals was in, in absolutely no way whatsoever to be, uh, 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 interpreted as, as disheartening. Um, I simply was making an illustration that when the residents are outside of the building, it is physically difficult to get them back inside, because you, 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 you can't go out and pick them up like a child and carry them back in, okay? You have to persuade them and guide them and try to lead them in, and they are doing nothing but resisting, screaming the entire time. This goes on repeatedly, all right? These, these are not wheelchair-bound, uh, immobile people. If they have an opportunity or the ability to get out of the, the, uh, the home, many times they do, and I'm a personal eyewitness to this. And, and, and this, this is just not appropriate. This, this, this borders back into the area that I mentioned that, uh, it, it, of, 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 of poor management. Uh, if they can't do it with six residents, how, how are they going to do it with eight? This just has to have some kind of an ending. I, I'm, I'm not even, the parking, quite honestly, is, is not even as much of a concern to me, uh, as it is the just disruptive nature. And yes, I've heard people from even the condominium association, also adjacent to part of the property, I've heard them scream over the fence back to the residents to shut up, okay? And, but I don't like the aspect of, that my wife can't leave the house without being yelled at and being called an effing whore, okay? When all she's do, she's leaving at eight-thirty in the morning to go on a walk on a Saturday or, or Sunday morning. Uh, this is not maintaining control over the residents that live there, and all I see is an exploitation of the facility becoming larger and with, when even critical and basic managerial elements are not present in this, in this situation. And these are, uh, these, these are, these are my biggest concerns.
Again, I hate to, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, well, the only thing that I, I, I wanted to, uh, um, to add to that was, was your comparison, perhaps, if, if, I don't know if it's statute-driven or what have you, did this be similar or viewed as, as a, as a large residence of eight people? There are no similarities between a large residence of similar number of inhabitants and what goes on in this residence. There's absolutely no comparison whatsoever. It's a different dynamic with different individuals, uh, with, with, with very, very different, uh, uh, disciplines and, and, and mental structures going on. This is not the same at all. And if, if the comparison of, uh, of, of a once-a-year Christmas parking event or a party, again, would you like that going on every few days in your neighborhood? That's a, that's a once-a-year situation, once a ca, everybody lives with those. We all try to be good neighbors. And no, I have not ever called the police department. I don't know if anybody else on the street has, but I have not. I've tried to just live with it and to, uh, uh, and, and, and basically let, let, uh, let a lot of those things alone. I'm not, I'm not a troublemaker. But when I learn that the facility is, is, is to be expanded by twenty-five percent and these fundamental issues of control are not even in place, and people are embarrassed, I, I'll give you just a very, very quick tw- twenty-second, uh, illustration. I had some appliances being delivered by Sears just a few months ago. The delivery driver, one of them, um, who happened to be African, African-American, was so upset and so disturbed from hearing the yelling and screaming and the racial slurs that, that, that were, uh, a huge component of that, of that event, of that conversation, coming out. And I had to explain to him the nature of the, of the, of the residents and, and that, uh, I was very, very sorry, it's, it's, it's embarrassing, and so on and so forth. This, this should not be, this simply shouldn't be happening. And, and I don't, I don't think there's any way to justify it. I, I know it, it tends to go with the territory, but I don't need, I view the territory as negative by virtue of the things I've explained to you, and enlarging it only makes it worse. Now, if some of these fundamentals are in, in, uh, you know, essentially nullified or, or made weak by virtue of not complying with the, uh, the, you know, the actual compliance issues that you have in your, in your codes, I, I can't speak to and address that, but I'm, uh, I'm, I'm very sensitive to the fact that we have a big disturbance issue in there, and I know, uh, virtually all of the neighbors on the street who I've conversed with repeatedly on this feel the same way. Uh, thank you again for allowing me to express some comments. Uh, again, I hate to inject myself, but, um, I think I need to be very clear. First of all, by Florida statute and the Fair Housing Act and federal and state case law, um, you can only view the operation there as a residential use and, uh, the people who live there and the, the support staff as a family. Uh, I'm sensitive to your concerns, I've, I've litigated these cases. Um, so you have to start with that premise. Um, the behavioral issues, uh, are issues that, um, I mean, the fact that these people are disabled doesn't mean that they don't have to comply with the law. So these behavioral issues, I think, can be addressed, uh, are appropriately addressed by the police department, or particularly, you may start writing to the, uh, Agency for Persons with Disability, because I know from litigating these cases, these are highly regulated, uh, entities, and those complaints, uh, will be reacted to by the appropriate people at the state level. Um, fundamentally, it comes down to this, is that you're making a zoning decision here, uh, that, and you've got to look at the criteria contained in your code of ordinances, and, um, I guess the best analogy would be that if you had a, a family living in a residential neighborhood on a residential lot, and they were poor neighbors and loud and did all the things that were complained about, you would not take away their residential zoning. You'd handle it through law enforcement or other means, so, um, this is a pretty sensitive area and one that, um, is very complicated by the application of state and particularly federal law.
Uh, I'd open up to any other questions, but one of the things I guess that it starts to, I guess, you know, for me dealing with is looking at this as a conditional use, and now, you know, w- we have a situation that I would hope that, uh, residents would, um, allow law enforcement and others that are, um, that regulate these things to be involved, uh, but it's, you know, what rights do we have as far as, uh, um, making what can be a bad situation worse? I, and I un, I fully understand, and this is, you know, what I'm looking at grappling with, is that everybody have rights, no, no, just because you are, uh, somewhat challenged doesn't mean that you can't go outside, you can't be, um, allowed to have certain freedoms, but at some point in time, we all have to modify our behavior in terms of it brings upon other freedoms. So I, you know, um, it would be a lot better to look at that if some things had happened in terms of calling the police to regulate those things that are, um, not appropriate. Um, barring that, you know, we're at a point, and I would ask you, you know, what we have from within, uh, this situation to look at, um, you know, because this is conditional. And, you know, one of the things that I, I had thought of about is, you know, I don't know, um, there's a certain, um, room area in the rest of this building that has to happen for these residents. I know you say that they're increasing this towards the structure, no structural changes, so it's modifying the, um, inside to be able to accommodate to more people.
Yes, I mean, they, they clearly have the room to do what they're, what they're, and that, well, that's very closely regulated by, by the state as well.
You know, um, I don't know, uh, whether you have anything by clear, uh, uh, slattery. If there are no other questions, then we're at a point of, uh, entertaining the motion, um, as far as this, uh, application. As to what needs to be looked at in relationship to approving and denying this, uh, this application.
So all you gotta do is look at the standards of review, because they're just conformed to the requirements of the Land Development Code, you have to answer that question. Is the use of the property, may put a progress of the property in question incompatible with the existing planned uses in the area? Legally, there's a residential use, and there's a family living there. Is it consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city comprehensive plan? As a residential neighborhood, will it, um, cause significant adverse impacts to the environmental and historical resources after that question? Will the use adversely affect adjoining property values? In my opinion, the issue is where, whether having a residential, having a residential use in a residential neighborhood will adversely affect the property values. Uh, does the city have adequate resources, uh, to provide, um, to, to provide facilities? There's been, I would suggest there's been no evidence. And does it provide for the efficient and orderly development, uh, considering the impact upon growth patterns and the cost to see to provide public, uh, facilities? You, you heard the evidence on that yourself.
When, when we look at the standards for review, the, the one that I was paying very close attention to was whether or not the city, uh, has adequate resources to provide all services to the property. Um, this, this is one that kind of was a hot button to me, because when we're dealing with a situation where some of the neighbors, um, e- express, you know, not feeling safe and, and stalking issues, noise issues, different things of that nature, that's where I was looking at that, whether or not we have adequate resources. But when I hear that there have not been phone calls to the police, that kind of says to me that we can't make a decision based on that information. So, I mean, I, I'm kind of in a place, and I'm uncomfortable, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about the concerns that were brought up. Um, I, I think they're legitimate, I think they're serious, I'm very uncomfortable about this, but at the same time, I don't think that I'm in a position right now to say that when we look at the standards for review, that there's anything that hasn't been met. And, and again, the one that I was paying the most attention to, because I thought this kind of fell in line with some of the allegations that were made, was whether or not we had adequate resources for, for our police department to do what they need to do to make the neighbors feel safe. Um, I'm at a point where I, I don't feel that we had an opportunity, that our police departments had an opportunity to improve the situation. Um, a- as a result of that, I'm, I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Would you like to comment on that?
Of course.
Uh, you want to make the motion first, or?
Uh, yeah, I, I move for approval.
I second that. And I am very concerned with the other standards were made by, um, Mr. Stevens, that it has to go through that. But looking at the other standards and, uh, you know, the application meets the criteria, so we have no option but actually vote for it. So for that respect, I will support it, and this is why I'm seconding it.
Do we want to explain that additional condition-
With the, uh, yes, with the condition, yeah.
Condition regarding parking, okay.
Yes. And, and you know, the challenge is, is that when you listen to someone and, and, uh, I have no reason to doubt what Mr. Stevens said, I have no reason to doubt what's in our backup. But I do think too is that when we're sitting here and we're trying to follow the standards that are, are set, uh, one thing that I would encourage Mr. Stevens and the neighbors to do is that when people are doing things that are basically, uh, inhibiting your freedom, um, you feel that your family is being threatened, is that that's what, uh, Chief, uh, Coaching and, and his department is for, um, to make sure that those individuals who have rights comply to the rights as far as others, and if it's deemed that these people are doing some things that's wrong, then they're either going to be arrested, or maybe management will say, hey, listen, some people are not able to exist in certain settings, period. And that's a management decision in relationship to, uh, you know, their rights versus the rights of everyone else. So with that, I would just encourage you and the rest, and for me, is trying to do whatever we can to, to make sure that everyone, um, feels safe and able to do what they need to do, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, I do, I didn't swear until I was in the talk, but I do. Um, I think this is something cities all over are wrestling with when you go to the events where city managers are all over the state. This is something that we're really wrestling with. Um, I can tell you, this is a situation where cities are losing in court for the same things you talked of, as Mr. Larson talked about, by the criteria, there's a real problem. Um, they are losing, and they are losing, paying a lot of money. Now, obviously, many people, including myself, have some philosophical differences in what the federal government says and about the compatibility and putting the people in neighborhoods. You know, there's a fine line there, but the federal government is strong. Uh, if you see what happens in a similar situation, a little bit different, say, Harbor, they will come after you for these situations. That's the first thing you have to deal with, and specifically going by these standards here, because I'm, cities are losing most of the time on these, and they try to go beyond that, which is unfortunate, but that's the way the federal people view it, that's the way the law is, until that changes your, your subject to it. But what I would suggest, in line with what, uh, Mayor Archie said, um, Chief Coach has got a very good individual there, um, John Alrich, or he has several, but one I could have in mind is John Alrich. Um, I think he would be a good facilitator between the police, the neighbors, and the manager of the facility, um, to get all of them together and have him as a liaison that the neighbors could go to, that, that person could also go to management and say, you have, you know, a lot of these seem to be a problem of how they're running, saying, I think we need to let the individual in charge of the program know, listen, this is what's going on, and we don't feel your staff is doing that. And with that liaison between the two people, I think, uh, that would be one of the best methods to try to resolve these, if they don't park like they're supposed to go there and say, hey, you agreed to do this, you're not doing it. Hey, these people can't be disrupting people, and they can't go outside the house. And again, also, as a liaison with John Alrich's stuff, facilitating getting these complaints, complaints to the pop, proper people to review, if it needs to go to the, a higher source to review on this thing. So I think where we can come in, the police department came in, is act as that liaison source between them, and again, there are problems that continue, um, send those complaints forward to have them investigated. So I think the chief, uh, would be able to do that as a situation with, if this is approved tonight, that he puts that immediate effect and, uh, and sets that situation up. And, and my, my only other observation to Mr. Stevens is that it would be in the best interest of you and your neighbors, to complain to the police department and complain to the Agency, uh, for persons with disabilities. Um, while this may be a lawful conditional use, no one has the right to operate, um, their lawful use in a manner that constitutes a nuisance. And to demonstrate a nuisance, you have to have a, uh, a documentable record that, um, you know, a behavior that constitutes nuisance.
And, and I, I definitely agree with that, and I understand, you know, this is to the management owners that, you know, um, it's a management, the owners- and owners, that, you know, it's a management, the owner's responsibility to look at the people that are there, and to see whether they fit within that area. I mean, you know, there are plenty of people that would say, challenge, would not be, it would not be conducive to have them within your facility, just because your staff can't handle them, nobody can handle them, they're very disruptive, they're combative, and rough to that, and that's, that's where I think that you come in, but I would hope that what the city manager talked about can be done, so that they have a right to their pursuit of happiness, as well as Mr. Stevens and the neighbors have a right to their pursuit of happiness, so.
What the city manager said, obviously, really, the proactive approach is the way to go, obviously, we do enforce the law, but Mr. Stevens and the management wanna meet me in the foyer, we'll exchange information, and we can get that process going.
With that, there's been a motion second roll call.
Mr. Taylor Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Luhus?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we have item, item twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four have been deferred, as stated earlier. Item number twenty-five is Tarpin Avenue, Street Closure. It has, I don't know, who's gonna start that off?
I'll start it off. Um, yeah, I appreciate it, Mayor. I, this is something that I feel has either been talked about for quite a while. Obviously, as y'all know, the city just took ownership to Tarpin Avenue, I guess, a year, maybe, maybe a little over a year ago. So that's really enabled us to have some more special events. And just for the record, I support special events, I think they do good things for the majority, or not, maybe not the majority, but a lot of merchants, they certainly do good things for my business. But as you know, I can't sit up here as a commissioner for the city of Tarpin Springs and make business decisions for myself, I have to make decisions for the community as a whole. So as we look to, you know, expand the goods and services that are offered on Tarpin Avenue, we have to take into consideration the negative impacts that they may have on some businesses. And really, this discussion, to me, I'd like it to be, you know, respectful of everyone, and really looked at from, in my opinion, a quality versus quantity approach. I think for a long time, because we had, we didn't own the street, we really, we didn't really have a whole lot of good events. So as we got the street back, and the chamber, and the TDC really started putting together some events, and more or less growing some mud against the wall, which were the events to see which ones were gonna stick. So with, you know, some, some good ideas of, of a lot of good people, you know, we have some really good events now. The snowplace like Tarpin Avenue was a great event, we're hopeful to see that come back. The food truck rallies, great event. So I think what we're trying to do, or what I'd like to do, is establish a criteria for events. So you have your A events, your B events, and maybe your C events. And you have your A locations, Tarpin Avenue, and your B locations and C locations. Maybe your B locations are Court Street, or Stafford Avenue, or Lemon Street. So out of respect for the people who are being negatively impacted by some events, who are more so in the service industry, which are people who, you know, matter, who have thriving businesses on Tarpin Avenue, and advertise, and bring a lot of people to the town, you know, we have to take these things into consideration. So obviously, we'd love to hear from all of y'all tonight, but keep in mind what I said about having a productive, respectful conversation, or a discussion. And keep in mind what I said, the quality versus the quantity. You know, in my opinion, I'd really like to see us define some, some quality events, and have those on Tarpin Avenue, and then some of the lesser events that we have, because they do bring a lot of people and exposure to the town, maybe have those on Court Street, like I said. So some of the craft events are what, what sticks out in my mind, those would be on Court Street. Or some of the other events, and I look to you all too, because you're merchants and you own businesses on the street, and you define what maybe would be a B event or a C event, and keep in mind what I said about those locations. I don't know if we'll be able to solve it all tonight, what we're trying to figure out, but certainly something must be done, we're at a crossroad here. And I've had discussions with the city manager, he kind of fills me in on the Thursday meetings, so I think it's a pretty good plan, you know, to have different categories of events. So that's basically my thought on it. Like to try and reach, you know, an amicable solution for everybody. Like I said, it's good for my business, but it's gotta be good for everybody, so.
Also, let me add one thing we talked about, Sheriff. There's also, for instance, an example was brought up earlier with Sponge Docks, the events, and the problem with the merchant. Despite what he might have said, if he quoted him, there's great lengths of staff time and time to try to appease him and try to do that. I know it's gonna be difficult in this case, but we've talked about some things that we may need to do to help those businesses. Again, it's a problem with enforcement, but maybe try to set some areas where we can have temporary fast fifteen minutes or so parking to appease the locals, but just ideas, to keep looking at different ideas when we set up these events, are there's ways with signage, or some places where someone who just wants to run in and get something and come out and not for taking events, maybe. So also, the discussion going forward, as we talk about the events, are looking for some of those ways to accommodate what the problem is, and if there's any way we can kind of help when these events occur, to try to deal with that. So, you know, I don't have all the answers yet and stuff, but that's something to discuss.
I'm glad you said that. One of the other things that I wanted to talk about as well is, is more so the events as a whole. I think there's a lot of things, you know, and it's easier said than done, I grant you that, it's easier said than done to plan an event, or to make sure it goes smoothly, because they never really go smoothly, and you look at them in hindsight and say, well, we could do this better, or that better. But I think one of the, one of the major issues, obviously, as we all know, is parking. So I think parking, as it relates to vendor parking, needs to be addressed. You know, there's, there's great parking lots, there's great, or there's great on-street parking on, on some of the streets that are a little bit further away, that I think we need to reserve, or talk to private property owners about reserving for vendors. You know, I mean, I don't think it's fair to have our prime parking lots, or logical to have our prime parking lots, let's just use the one on Tarpin Avenue and nineteen, or alternate nineteen as an example, to have Tarpin Avenue closed and use that parking lot for vendor parking. That doesn't make sense. That parking lot needs to be used for our residents, or whoever's attending these, or yeah, whoever's attending these types of events, or going to the meat market, or going to the shoe store, going to get their haircut, or any of the service-oriented businesses. So I think that that's something that can be modified, and it really doesn't, it's not a big deal to say to our vendors when they fill out their application, or pay their fee, by the way, here's where you have to park. I think that that's something that we can surely agree on relatively easy. And the other thing just to keep in mind is, something that Mr. Hulus mentioned early is that if, or triggered in my mind, is that if we can't necessarily come to an agreement on the types of events, or the different locations for the events, then this commission is gonna have to really start to take closer consideration for every event that we approve, and we're gonna have to be the judge of whether or not that event is something that we think is suitable for the town. And we're gonna have to look at it on an individual basis. Thank you.
I definitely appreciate the comments as far as a framework for trying to get this done, and I can tell you, I wanna get it done as expedient as possible. One of the things is, I will say is that I try to look at the events on an individual basis. Now, I think that that's what we're charged with, is that not just just because somebody bring it forward. But what I like to do, and I assume that we like to hear from everyone, now unless somebody else up here would like to talk first, is to ask those individuals that have a problem with closing the street off, to speak first. I kinda already have a flavor for the people that feel like this is beneficial, so, you know, I wanna try to make this as productive as possible. Some of the things that Commissioner Tarpin talked about, some of the things that Mr. LaCorus talked about, in my ideal world, we wouldn't be talking about it here, we would be talking about it somewhere else, working it out, and then, you know, we don't have to deal with it. But since we have it to deal with, I'd rather for it to be where someone is coming up and saying, why I don't support it, how it's hurting my business, and hopefully, what could be done, short of maybe just stopping it, if that's the only result, so be it. But if there's another solution, I like what Mr. LaCorus talked about, that I really have a problem because it's taking up all the parking in front of my business, I wish that there was some designated parking for my customers, that would make it easier for me. I mean, that's a solution to me, in terms of trying to go forward. So I would just ask, it doesn't have to go that way, because we're gonna open it up for public comments, and everybody have an opportunity, up to four minutes, to state their case. So those that have a problem with the street closure, I would ask if you would come forward, and state your name, address, and we give them four minutes, and hopefully, there's a solution in your comments.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Jose Rivera, Jose Manuel Rivera, everybody knows me as Manolo. I'm the owner of Manolo's Twenty-Two and Bistro, Tarpin Avenue, one five zero, it's Tarpin Avenue. And I do have a problem with closing the street, but at the same time, I have, great comments at one point, issues that we have, that I have, it's parking. Most of my patrons, whoever wants to come for dinner in my restaurant, the day that we have the events, sometimes have no places to go, no places to park, so what I do, I unfortunately have to lose reservation, have to lose people coming into the restaurant because of the events. Some of the events are great for us, the event that we have in December, the snow festival, it was great. We had the participation of the restaurants, of the people in town, or on that street, and that was great, it was great that day. Events that I have issues with are food truck rallies, I'm a restaurant, I, my business is, of course, drive on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings, and of course, Fridays and Saturdays are my strongest days, and if my, the street is completely closed, and I have twenty food vendors in front of my restaurant, I cannot operate my business. I, at one point, I cannot just turn my business into another truck, because it's not what I have. I have to use my business, or keep my business away how it is. I don't mind if somebody wants to do, or they want to continue doing the food truck rallies, they can do it, I'm pretty sure they can find it Sunday, or if they want to do it, fine, let's, let's work on not, try not to put any food vendors in front of all the food restaurants that we are in that corner. And where I'm located at, we have, of course, my restaurant, we have Currents, we have Tarpin Tavern, and we have Sanders. If you guys, if they want to do it, but try not to put any food vendors near our area, so we can also, at one point, approach it or utilize that, that people, it would be great, I would consider that. But what happened last time to me, it's they tried to put a vendor so close to my place that I have to disagree on that, and I'm telling them to, they have to move it because of generators, because of people, because of patrons, nobody can see what I, you know, my place, and that was one of the issues. And like I said, if we can find parking spaces for our guests on the restaurants, if we can find different days or different times for us to be able to do this event, I would be more happy with getting the events done. And of course, the events that allow us, as business owners, to participate in a better way, other than just having, like I said, twenty trucks coming front out of town and trying to sell food in front of us, it's something that I don't appreciate. Craft bands, arts and crafts, they're fine, they're okay, there's something that, you know, people, everybody has to, has to eat, has to, and that's something that we can utilize. Another thing is, whenever they're gonna do these events, they need to be better planned, because unfortunately, we end up being public restaurants to all the patrons that go into the restaurants, because there's not enough planning on quarter parties, they don't have enough places for them to go, and we have to go through the issues and the problems, and have to tell the people that, no, we can, they can come into a restaurant only to use the restaurant. If they're gonna do the events, please, get it more organized and get it a little bit of the street. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Teddy Demercis, I own the Acropolis McMark in Tarpin Springs. Glad to hear you have the same problem that the government has. We're doing that for the last year and a half, we've had a big problem. I advertise every, every week, it costs me about two hundred fifty dollars a weekly, monthly is a little bit over a thousand dollars. I bring customers to my business, plus on Tarpin Avenue since nineteen seventy-six. I'm there thirty-seven years. Now, the last couple, a year, I would say year, they're bringing all a little bit more festivals, like antiques in the street, people that come in for little things, and my customers. And one, three days only, three customers, two hundred fifty customers sign, they don't want that. I have it here, addresses and everything. Now, you taught me how I'm gonna pay my employees, I have five employees, it costs me a lot of money. Anytime we do something like this, I'm losing the twenty-five, forty dollars a day. Now, the city will make a good for, for me? I'm not asking for that, I'm asking, two, three times a year, they can do it. They can do it on the side streets, okay, fine, but also, we gotta have the space for the people that coming in, they open a little booth there. I mean, they're parking everywhere. How we gonna supply, and how I'm gonna support my family and those five employees I have? If I'm out of water, please, I want you to guys tell me, here, two hundred twenty-five customers in three days. If you want it, I can live right over here, and guys can see it. You taught me what I have to do. Is it impossible? I don't think so. For thirty-seven years, we don't find. The last year and a half, every second week of the month, little festival, little festival. What, what's, what's going on? I don't understand it no more. I pay taxes, those people out there, they don't pay no taxes, they pocket the money. We pay, the city will pay every, everything. Those guys, they don't pay nothing. You ever see anybody have a register in the front of them? I mean, you see everybody, okay? You see anybody having a register in the front of those little booths? They don't. I pay, I have the register, and I pay, all my employees, I pay taxes, the city, state, and everybody. I think it's very unfair to be closing the street every second month, or once a month, so many times, I mean, that's impossible. Please, all I ask is a simple thing, a little bit, open the street, Tarpin Avenue, go aside, we can afford them, we want to close down, after thirty-seven years? I brought customers, two hundred fifty customers, regular customers, or better, in three days. I have right here to see it. If you don't believe me, you should call my customers. I have a customer that wanna come in, crippled people, they wanna come in, and matter of fact, I have one here, he fell down behind my building. He wants to come into my store, he fell down, and he goes to me, he calls me, I go steady, I want you to help me, I wanna come to the store. That's the day we had a festival, not Christmas, before that. Now, those people, they gotta come to see me. You saw me, those people, they make those little festivals, how much money they spend for advertising? How much money I spend weekly, myself, and monthly, to bring customers in Tarpin Springs for the last thirty-seven years? How much it cost me? These young men knows, some other people know me well, very well, I'm not a robber, I'm thirty-seven years. They come in, no taxes, they don't pay taxes, we pay taxes. You guys, you gotta put this guy with a register right there to pay taxes. Do I am wrong somewhere? All I need is your people help, or you wanna get me out of here, that discrimination, discriminate me? I'm the Greek boy from Tarpin Springs, okay? There's a guy with a panel, he comes in, he opened a restaurant, and wants to survive. I mean, wanna supply him, we discriminate him too? What's happening? We gotta hear a guy over here- We got a year, a guy over here, come this, once a year, coming to a festival, it kills us for twenty-five, hundred dollars a day. That's not fair. Do something, please.
Yes, sir, I, I, I heard you.
Thank you.
I heard that, that tale on that too. Uh, so, if you could wrap it up, and then we're gonna hear from some other people. If you wanna give that to the clerk, you can.
Please.
Uh, you know, we'll log that in. But what we wanna try to do is to try to have some solutions. Hopefully, if not tonight, at some point in time, if there's a meeting, you'll know. So, uh, if you have any other closing comments, you can make that, or we go to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Semolina Makers. I, um, live here in Tarpon Springs. My business is on Tarpon Avenue, 118 East Tarpon Avenue, the Hair Salon. Um, I am here today because I have been greatly affected by the street closures. I don't mind them, I encourage them, it's wonderful, but not every other weekend. And in some weeks, in some months, I've counted two. So, with that being said, I would greatly appreciate if the side streets were utilized, parking more available for handicap accessible individuals. Teddy mentioned, Jose mentioned. I had a customer who had to will herself up from, uh, T. Fly's to my hair salon during the food truck rally. I find that absolutely ridiculous when there's handicap parking in front of my salon, directly in front of my salon. She can't park on the back street and will herself up a set of steps through the PR arcade. Something has to be done as far as the parking. I encourage, you know, as, as many city functions as possible, can they be held at Trek Parks? I remember a lot of the festivals stuff in the past used to be held there. I had my business when I, when I was nineteen years old on Tarpon Avenue. I went to US nineteen hoping that, you know, the grass might be greener on the other side. I came back to Tarpon Avenue three years ago. My business was doing great the first two years that I was there. This last year, awful. And that has to be, that, that's, the wedding party, I had a wedding party of seventeen women. That's a thousand five hundred dollars that I was gonna make on a Saturday. I lost it. That's a big amount for one person, small salon owner in Tarpon Springs to lose. That's two months' worth of rent. So, please, take in consideration what we are saying as far as our businesses being affected. At the same time, if there is some sort of resolution utilizing the side streets, I'm all for it. Done, thank you very much.
Good evening, Wesley Fackless, um, resident and, excuse me, resident and third generation owner of several buildings and businesses, two businesses in the CRA district and right on Tarpon Avenue. Um, in that period of time, we've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I feel that we are starting to head in the right direction as a business district. And obviously, have a wonderful downtown with a lot to offer, restaurants, retail, service, arts and antiques. In order to have a thriving downtown area, I feel that we need a diverse retail mix and group of businesses. It'd be great to bring back a dry cleaner, a drugstore, more shops. These retail and service oriented resident based businesses help to maintain a year round flow of commerce. In order to have that and to attract more, we need to have close parking and accessibility to businesses, especially on Saturdays. This is crucial to the service and retail businesses because most people, or a lot of people, are off on Saturdays. And that's when they do their shopping. And I would like to praise everyone that works hard to promote the downtown. The TDC, the Merchants Association, the Chamber of Commerce, um, we just had a wonderful event chaired by Cindy Comstock, a Christmas event, that was fantastic. And I'm not against having events. The, as Commissioner Terrapany said, it's quality versus quantity. Um, and I'm not thrashing one event over the other, but we need to have, we need to categorize them. And, um, knowing that having events downtown is important. If there are too many frequent street closing, a lot of money is lost. I lose a lot of money on a Saturday. Um, now, if there are a few well advertised, well organized events that are spread out throughout the year, then everybody can get involved and, and say, okay, I'm willing to, uh, you know, maybe lose a little to promote my business more. But to do it all the time continuously, especially when it's busy, busy time, I don't know how we can continue to, uh, afford that. Because customers get upset, they leave, and they patronize other resident based business districts. Again, quality versus quantity events is the key. I don't, I wanna stress that. Um, remote parking for vendors needs to be worked out prior to the event. I think that's very, very important. Um, at all times, not just during events, merchant, merchants should not park in front of their businesses. Um, I know that's a separate issue, but that's very, very important. They should leave the closest spaces for their customers. Um, event organizers should always try to be sensitive to the businesses affected and try to mitigate their concerns together, which is what we're doing here. And I think, you know, we're all a family, we're all a community, we're gonna move forward together to do this. Um, we haven't been, we haven't been in business a hundred years without working together with people. We wanna see everybody out here succeed. Um, barricades, no parking signs need to be put up as close as possible to the event and taken down as soon thereafter as possible. Um, all possible options should be considered for event location, um, and accessibility to businesses as Commissioner Terrapany, um, and the city manager said. Um, and I feel confident that these issues and concerns can be worked out so that we can all succeed. Not only in the short term, but most importantly, in the long term. And it's not difficult, I mean, it's not easy to, to stay in business for a long period of time. A lot of, I've, I've heard people and they say, well, you've been there a hundred years, you've got your established customers. I have to keep growing, I have to keep bringing in new businesses and, and new customers. And one business promotes the others. Cindy promotes my business, I promote theirs, and somebody else promotes mine. We're all in this together. Um, but I think it's important, not only for the present businesses and property owners, but also for future business and property investors to our downtown to see that this is gonna be a thriving area, uh, and a thriving, uh, community as a whole. We also have, uh, apartments and, and people that are interested in coming back to, to live in a downtown area and work in a downtown area. But they need to see that there's gonna be parking because that parking is crucial, uh, to everyone. It's nice to say everyone's gonna walk and we have a walkable community and we have the trail and, you know, but when people use their car. I'm a runner, but when I shop, I take my car. And that's, you know, that's just the way, where we are. So, I think, uh, um, like the mayor said, we may not solve everything tonight, but I think if we put our ideas together and work together, um, we can, uh, we can come to some wonderful solutions. So, thank you for your time.
Well, my assumption is that, uh, the rest that might wanna speak is wanna speak in terms of, uh, in support of Tarpon, uh, Avenue closures. But what I would ask is that if you wanna get up there and you just wanna speak, it's a great thing. Um, but if you do speak, um, hopefully, we can speak in terms of continuing to look at solutions. Uh, one of the things that, uh, come to my mind is, I, I keep hearing about frequency. Uh, maybe sometime there is a balance. So, once we didn't have Tarpon Avenue, we had to go to state. We couldn't have as many events, not we have anytime we want to, how frequent, um, those type of things. And I'm not sure if this is the place to work those things out. I, I would hope that there is, uh, the opportunity. And I know that there are, from the chamber to, uh, the Merchants Association and the rest, is that there are, uh, venues for everybody to be a part in, to, to have their, uh, their faith. And I will hope that people take advantage of that. So, it's still public comments, I'm just, you know, I'm waiting for anybody that likes to speak. One of the things is, is, is this, is that, um, as, uh, we look at, hearing, I guess, from the other side, is that the type of events that we have is probably gonna be very, very important to everybody. I, I, if I was a restaurant, I might not wanna have food in front of my establishment. But the other thing is, how many time are you gonna have the food truck rally there? And as we look at events, and I know it's, it, it can be easily said, you're not affected because you don't have a business. And that's true. But I could tell you is that the only reason that I sit here and I vote for any event that happens in the city is I believe that it's gonna benefit the city and the businesses and the residents as a whole. Somebody's gonna suffer maybe on one day. But somebody came up and talked to me and they told me they didn't wanna have no businesses, no, no street closures. And they talked to me on the day that we had the no, 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 no place like Tarpon. So, my thought was, they didn't wanna have that event. And that was probably one of the better events that we ever had in Tarpon Springs. I, I know the person is here today, he probably don't wanna talk about it. But there are some events that's gonna help, and maybe there's some events that maybe we shouldn't have. So, if nobody else wants to speak, and I, like I said, I know that there's some people that's for it. But I could tell you right now is that I am definitely for closing the street, but I'm for trying to implement some of the things that would alleviate some of the problems that some of the other businesses have and that we need to be sensitive to the type of events that we bring in. And that there are some businesses that can't make money because they are basically, they feel like they're service oriented. But you're not gonna make any money if nobody don't know that you're there. I would hope that the events bring people to Tarpon and they find out about your business. Maybe they don't shop with you that day, maybe they come back the next Saturday. So, but it is open. For a while it is.
Peter Lax, 514 Ashland Avenue. Uh, it's good that these conversations are coming forward. And after, earlier in the meeting with regards to the Sponge Docks and the closures there, uh, the manager, LaCouris, earlier said that these do warrant further discussions. And first off, I would suggest that, uh, a future meeting, maybe in February or such, you schedule a workshop specifically to deal with some of these issues, to bring people to Sponge Docks, downtown, such. I think what, uh, Commissioner Terrapany has mentioned, and it's something I've thought about for a while and I spoke to them outside, is special events are important to bring people. But as you say, it's the quality. And I think the people down at Sponge Docks have gotten tired of the arts and crafts 'cause they're competing. Uh, when I did my Christmas shopping, I have a thing, I don't shop at malls. Uh, I shop, I forget the two stores exactly asked, but, uh, when I was there, I spoke to them. I says, well, you know, how are things been going to have any of these special events? And the one gentleman, Manny, says, the food truck rallies don't work. They really don't for him. Because the people come to eat, it's a hot novelty thing, they come, they eat, and then they're gone. For him, he's got lots of antiques and stuff, so when people come with families, they don't wanna come in with their kids, they're afraid of damaging stuff. Trucks block up the street. I spoke to another lady at the other end, she said kind of the same thing, that, well, people come, they eat, and then they're gone. They're not really seeing the residual effect. So, part of what you may wanna do is put some sort of a feedback mechanism in, either through the chamber or through these event hosting people. Because, to be honest with you, one thing that I've seen neglected over the years is in that application, one of the last lines on there is, they're supposed to give you a, a report afterwards of the event. And even when I was on the commission, I don't think any of y'all have sensed that, is seeing reports. So, maybe part of the process should be, you need to start reporting back some sort of calculable figures. How many people came through your doors? How many counts were there? And then, in a sense, compare it to maybe other regular weekend days. So, you can get some quantitative effect of what the events are. And secondly, as far as quality events, to me, you want to draw people to Tarpon to patronize our businesses. So, whatever events you wanna try to put together, it's to bring people in, yes. But to do the shopping and the eating and the services at our businesses. That's what the whole thing of special events is. And, and the thing where people come in and they set up these little shows and then maybe give the exchange or something, a couple hundred bucks for tables or stuff, and then they're gone. Maybe they spent the night, maybe they ate. What brings people? Entertainment, music, arts, creative things. So, to me, that's where we need to look at expanding what we're offering. And those type of events, and like the lady mentioned, Craig Park. Down in Clearwater, they have First Fridays now. Others, in Tampa, they have concerts every month down at Curtis Hixon Park. We got Craig Park, let's start doing some events to draw people into town. And then, they'll be here, and then they will go eat at some of the restaurants or get their hair cut, or maybe learn about the hair cutting places or the shopping. Those are the type of events I think we need to focus on. And when you speak about categorizing and critiquing or ABCs, A events are the events that draw people in but do not compete against our local businesses. And then if you're gonna have B and C events, then you're gonna need to decide where you're gonna put them or how you wanna deal with them, or limiting them. But, uh, a workshop is a good start, and I appreciate Mr. Terrapany bringing this forward. And a workshop could be done to incorporate, I think, some of the same issues that merchants down at the Sponge Docks have. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Maria Seber, uh, president of Merchants Association and own, um, two businesses, uh, on the Sponge Docks. I'm here basically to represent the Merch, Merchants Association right now. Um, we've talked about a venue for meeting. We do have that on Thursday mornings at the TDC meeting. Uh, where the Merchants Association members, or some of the Merchants Association members, as well as people from the community and from the chamber get together and try to work out these types of things. The Merchants Association recently just completed a, um, marketing plan for this year for events. And we will be putting that plan together with the chamber, uh, at the TDC meeting and, uh, giving it to Mr. LaCouris and Karen Hemmings. And this is a plan that, uh, is also gonna include our events. And primarily, our events are planned during off season. We try to bring people into Tarpon Springs for these events when we don't have anyone in Tarpon Springs, um, when the streets are empty. And not only downtown, but also on the Sponge Docks. Um, so primarily, we wanna have events to bring people to Tarpon Springs and not to affect businesses in a negative way at all. I understand the parking issues with downtown. I understand your issue with, uh, vendors parking off premises or in other areas. I, I agree, that's a, that's an important point. Um, and those are things that we need to work on. But I think, um, solution wise, if more merchants came to the TDC meeting, um, the Merchant Association members, other business owners, um, you know, anyone who has an opinion or, uh, concern should be coming to the meetings to discuss these things and, uh, so that we can all work together. Um, so I just wanna encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Comstock, do I have to say my address? Cindy Comstock, eleven twenty-four Sunset Ridge Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Cindy Comstock, eleven twenty-four Sunset Ridge Lane, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I just wanna say, I know everyone that's here, and I love you all, and I know we've been having some problems lately with some of these events that we've been having. Um, I've been there for nineteen years on Tarpon Avenue, I have a successful antique and now a consignment furniture business. Um, I'm constantly changing it up in my business to encourage more people to come to it. I too advertise on a constant basis. The events that we've been having on Tarpon Avenue have greatly affected my business in the good part. I have people who come to the events, now sometimes they don't buy it that day, but they come back the next day, or they come back the next week, or they come back and say, "Hey, we came to the food truck rally, we had a great time, we wanted to see all of Tarpon Springs." Sometimes they can't carry all the stuff with them when they're downtown, they just can't do it, you know? So, they come back, and they go everywhere. They don't just come downtown, they go to the Sponge Docks, they go to other businesses throughout the city, and like Mayor Archie said, Mayor Archie says, "It's to benefit the city as a whole when we have these events." Now, I know we're mature enough on Tarpon Avenue to have a solution to this problem, and I understand a lot of the people's feelings, I really do. But I also have a business on Tarpon Avenue, and I work just as hard, and I've been there almost just as long. So, just to let you know, some of the events do well for me, some don't, but nine times out of ten, they come back the next day, or they come the next week and come in and say, "Hey, you know, we were here last week, so we wanted to come in and take a look at your shop." So, just so you know, that's kinda how I feel, but I know we can work this out as a team and, and make everybody happy on the street. Also, come to the meetings on Thursdays, at the Chamber of Commerce at nine o'clock, so we all can discuss things, everything, all of us. We are all a family on Tarpon Avenue, just like the Philly said, okay? And throughout the city, okay?
Hi, my name is Tracy Swade, um, current restaurant, two hundred east Tarpon Avenue, Tarpon Springs, this store is downtown. Um, first, I'd like to address that I totally agree, there's a hierarchy of what is important for the fundamentals of what brings business to all of us. Um, I have to say, on our first food truck rally, I went to the chamber in tears, and I said I have sixty reservations to it, I have three couples that are over seventy experiencing their anniversary, how are they supposed to crush themselves into the restaurant when the food was, the streets closed? I was devastated. I should've opened my mouth, because they sent me an notice, the street was going to be closed. So, as long as the city communicates with us merchants, I now call or I let my guests know, the street will be closed, take a left on the right or a right on the left and park in the parking lot, and I will go get you, I mean, I'll do whatever it takes to get you to the restaurant. Um, the first three years I was open, I was negative, not that I'm not negative now, but I'm much less negative thanks to all of the events the city is having. The food truck rallies have actually stimulated business that day, future days. I cannot stress enough that if you come to the TDC meeting, you'll know exactly what's going on. The four food truck rallies, we have plans. If you didn't go, you wouldn't know how many there are. So, the merchants want to all get together, climb on board, because I never thought I would, and I'm experiencing the best year ever. So, come to the meeting, let's all work together as a team, and I too have spent at least twelve hundred dollars a month for the last six months of advertising. So, I get it, but I want us all to be happy, so, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner is Bo Rush, and back in the day books, one sixty-one East Tarpon Avenue. I probably have more to say on this subject than anyone here, I wanted to give a little input earlier, I was gonna say some of what Reyes said. Our Merchants Association, by the way, we, we merged the downtown with the Sponge Docks, the first time I know that that's ever happened. We have been cooperating, we beg people to come to these meetings, we beg them to join, we beg them for input, and they don't give it, and honestly, outside of this room here, there's probably not five people that actually participate, that actually do anything. We bust our behinds. I have busted my behind for three years that I've been here trying to promote this city, and I'll tell you, I think I've seen Manola at one meeting, I've never seen Teddy, okay, two, never seen Teddy at a meeting, never seen Vasili at a meeting, and I, I can rebut everything that they said. I, as far as Manola is concerned, with the truck being close to his business, we moved it, we moved a truck with Hotwell because he was standing out in the street, jumping up and down, throwing his fit. Instead of getting ready, taking advantage of the two thousand, three thousand, four thousand foodies that I deposited directly in front of his door, he's just, he's just whining and complaining. Tracy puts tires outside of her truck, outside of her restaurant, is has a guy out there selling martinis, she's got a little side menu, I would love to know how much money she made that day. So, what, what I'm saying is, is that they can work with this, if they choose to work with it, they can do something with it. Foxley's closes at three o'clock on Saturdays, so most of the time when we have these food truck rallies, yes, the roads close for a couple hours before the rally, because I'm running around out there, I'm paying somebody to be inside my store while I'm running around sweating like a pig, getting all these trucks, trying to make everyone happy, getting them in place, and then, as soon as it's all going, they close. Now, and, and same thing with Teddy, I believe Teddy's closed most of, most of the time when we have them, depending on what time we have them. If it was me, and I knew there were thousands of people, they were gonna be deposited right in front of your store, I would be out there working it. You've got to work your business. I've heard Mark La Corrus say this at meetings, you can't just sit inside and cross your fingers and hope for the best, you've got to, not, not negative things, just you've got to work your business. You have, you have to work your business, you have to get people inside, and Tracy was a perfect example of that. And I, I tell you, I, it's a struggle. We, we are in our season right now. Our season is not going well, our season hasn't gone well for several years. I wish we had an event today. I wish I could tell you how I didn't make enough money today to pay my employee. I know another business owner downtown, she said she's made thirty dollars three days this week. It's bad, it's real bad, and these events bring people here. I, you can get two hundred and fifty people to sign anything, I will get five hundred Tarpon Springs residents down here, if you wanna play that game, I, you wanna take these events away, I'll fill this place up. I'll have them out in the hall, the people that have enjoyed themselves the last year at the different events that we've had. So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fall for that. I'm really passionate about this, and I care about my business, and I'll tell you, if you fall into line with this type of thinking, I'm outta here, guaranteed. I will not, I will not...
So, let me just say, the purpose is not to point fingers here and not to tell other people how to run their businesses, the purpose is to try and find a solution that everybody can live with and a compromise.
Okay, I understand.
If, if I might just take over for a, a second bit, and I appreciate Commissioner Tarepani, but you got four minutes, if you feel like venting a little bit, I understand, I, I let everybody vent, Teddy vent it, you wanna vent, vent.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Here we go get to a point of trying to see what we can do as just stated, so we all work together.
Absolutely, absolutely, I wanna work with people. Like, they, they're invited to any meeting we ever have, we would love the input, we would love some help, frankly, 'cause we're, we're working our tails off. So, uh, honestly, some of the things that, the suggestions that I've heard, it concerns me, 'cause I don't think they're gonna work. If you put an event on whatever that road is behind Teddy's, is a court, they don't, we've had that, they don't come, they won't come to Tarpon Avenue, even if you put it down in the mayor's parking lot, oftentimes they won't come to Tarpon Avenue, they just won't do it. And why in the world did we spend thousands and thousands of dollars making Tarpon Avenue look as beautiful as it is if we're not gonna take advantage of it and use it? This is the way, this is the way that it's done all over the place. I have a lot to say, and I, and I, you know, I would be open to having a bigger meeting where we could spend more time, and I'm sorry if I was disrespectful, I didn't mean to be, but I, I'm really passionate about this, and I have tried as hard as I could to work with everyone, but we need these events, that's why we're doing it, because we need it. If we don't have it, you, you're gonna lose businesses, and you're not gonna build the downtown that you need. Thank you.
Sue Thomas, President, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, one eleven East Tarpon Avenue. While Peter was talking, I went through my calendar, and, um, in the last fifteen months, we have closed the road seven times. The other five times have been Epiphany, Martin Luther King, Independence Day Parade, things that were not the Merchants Association. So, when you're counting all the closures, count them too. Um, I do wanna thank Vasili, he did have the courtesy to call me today and to talk about this. Um, people are asking why a lot of these businesses aren't open, and I have pictures of people standing in front of a lot of the closed businesses, looking inside, and several have asked me why with an event like this they would close, and I can't answer that. Cindy's right, our visitors come back. We find that in the chamber, they come back in droves because they wanna find out what happened, and they're right, they aren't gonna carry this stuff around. Um, the comments I have heard the very most, and Christmas was a perfect example, I can't tell you how many people we had say, "We had no idea..." First of all, we have people who don't know, that live in Tarpon and don't know we have a downtown, there's a problem need to solve. But we had so many people come in and say, "We didn't realize that downtown had all these new shops and restaurants." We are showcasing what we have, and for the seven times that we've shut down, I think we've brought in a whole lot more business. Um, off Tarpon Avenue doesn't work, we have done that with the, uh, twenty-two years worth, well, twenty years at that point worth of a, a Thanksgiving art show, they didn't come downtown. We put the art show on Tarpon Avenue, we have a counter on our door, this last year, we had thirteen hundred and seventy people walk in our door, that's after we took off our time that we came in. That's a lot of people to bring to Tarpon Avenue who didn't know we were there. Um, you mentioned A and B, um, events, and I, I think that the ones we have had on Tarpon Avenue are the A events, we have a treasure sale, which is, we changed from a flea market, I consider that a B event, and we do hold that in the parking lot, you're absolutely right, things like that can go in the parking lot. Um, I wanna call the market a B event, but that is a good place for it. Um, vendor parking, we do use the banks, we do not let our vendors park in the city parking lots, we learned this from the arts, from the Fine Arts Festival, where we park about twenty-five thousand people in this town, and by God, they find a place to park if they come in. Um, there is parking in the back of each one of the stores that has a complaint, each one of you has parking in the back, um, and we try, and the last time, I admit I forgot, we try to put up handicap parking signs in these, the lot behind you guys, we try to put up four or five, uh, handicap parking signs in that lot so that there is parking. Um, I guess, I will just close with the same thing that everybody has said, we have, we have been having TDC meetings for as long as I've been with the chamber, which is seven, eight years, whatever, and we have, we throw the table, but we'd love to see you guys there, be a part of the solution, not part of the problem. Merchants Association meetings, TDC meetings, everyone is welcome, and I hope we can work this out, because these events we are having are absolutely critical to our businesses. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, my name is Greg Zilni, I am the co-owner of Temple Goddess Dance and Yoga and Temple Goddess Boutique, seventeen North Safford. In my experience, the downtown has consistently been a place that people go when they're looking for that specific thing. Uh, it's a destination place, yes, but not the walking town that it could be and that it's become when we have these events. Now, being on a side street, we don't get a lot of foot traffic, not during the week, not even on the weekends. Now, even though we're nestled between a bar and a restaurant, we still hear the question, "Are you new here?" Now, we've been here for four years. Now, like many others, our company relies on repeat business, from the local community and from others. We occasionally see tourists and those who come down to escape the winter months, and they're looking to keep active, which is great, it helps, yet that's not what keeps us in business. Like our product and like our business, it's equally dependent on both the retail and the studio classes being well balanced. Now, that said, there are specific times in the year when, where one side pulls the weight of the other. Now, winter is one of those times when class attendance diminishes, causing us to rely heavily on the retail side to carry the weight. This past December was the leanest sales record in our history in Tarpon Springs, not even meeting our expenses or our rent. And I know that other businesses here have similar stories. However, we spend a lot in advertising, we spend a lot on promoting, and we put out a lot of goodwill towards the rest of the community, including, I do run a Facebook page for the downtown, as well as a group for the downtown, and I welcome everybody here, if you're not on it, Downtown Tarpon Springs on Facebook, please join. Now, one of the things that we also do in the downtown is we track and record everything that we do and everything that happens in the downtown, every event that the downtown has held, that we participated in, this past year has consistently shown dramatic increase in our sales, not only over that day, but over, with our foot traffic and our sales for at least a week after. We do get people coming back from these events. So, for me, I see these events as a plus, as something that there should be more of. Yes, I do think that there could be things that we change, that we, we do utilize the side streets a little bit more. I would have no problem putting a food truck in front of my business, please, bring them on. It is very disheartening, though, that when you can count on one hand the number of people that you see walking down the street on any given day, not including Earl, all right? Yes, all right? If closing the street down for a few hours every week, or every couple of weeks, now for worthwhile events, brings more people, and it increases the foot traffic in the downtown, and it only helps. If it helps a specialty niche studio, like, and boutique like mine, then I have to believe that it is helping everyone, maybe not that day, but in the days and weeks to come. Thank you.
Good evening, Cindy Wilson, um, Sweetie's Ice Cream Parlor and Spice Man's Kitchen. Uh, I'm here to support the, um, downtown merchants who are in favor of street closure. Um, I've been on the docks for about five years now, I know confrontations, nobody's ever gonna be happy, there's always gonna be people that agree, disagree. Um, when we have events, we don't always do good, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Can you categorize events? I don't know, if you took an A event and it rained, would that turn it into a C event? Um, I like the concept, but I don't know if that would really work. Um, I just believe also that the people that complain the most are the people that aren't involved. Uh, I have a real job, if I can't come to all the meetings during the week, um, I try to come and support the merchants as much as I can, but, um, if we get more people involved that own businesses, hopefully we'll make solutions. Uh, as Cindy said, I think we're a town that can get together and find some solutions. I wish I could say, gee, we could do this or do that, but I don't think anybody has the answers, but people do come back, I hear that all the time, you know? I didn't buy this time, but I saw your shops, and, you know, we come back again. Um, so hopefully, there'll be some resolutions, maybe, like someone said, do a meeting, just all of us getting together to try to resolve this. Thank you.
Well, I, I just thank everyone for all of those comments, I, I don't know, you know, in a sense, whether we go from here, uh, those that nobody go, the commission can, can let me sum. The boss wants to talk a little while, it, it seems gorgeous now.
I just wanna sum things up, because obviously I've involved, and involved this, so I wanna give the straight scoop that you'll get from me now, or later, or if you decide to come to these meetings. First of all, the side that doesn't want the events are not gonna convince me otherwise. Um, I have made a point over the years of being city manager to... city manager to look at other cities, look at the events they do, look at where they do them, look at how they do them. That's why we talk about these things every Thursday morning. First Friday Downtown Clearwater is located as a very important place. It's located downtown. Now, I know when I went down there to check it out and stuff, I looked and saw the businesses were down there that I didn't even know was there until I went down to their First Friday event and walked them and used them. So, if you heard the city of Dunedin, the city of Safety Harbor, the city of Clearwater, talking about moving events away from the main downtown area, they would laugh at you, just to be honest with you, because that's what you want to do it. On the other side, I do agree very wholeheartedly with, uh, quality over quantity. And we may have some very interesting discussions because there are some events that I think we need to talk about and do something different with, with both the downtown and the docks. There are some different ways of working with these events to tie it in more with the businesses downtown and at the docks. Um, one of my very first examples, I want to thank Tracy from Currents, always promote her everywhere, but one of the main reasons I promote her is she's one of the ones, when you're talking to other city managers at these things, is a perfect example of why some of these things work and why they don't work. The example is with food truck rallies when they first come out, the whole discussion with all cities and all, talking about food truck rallies was how bad you hurt the local restaurants. But you only hurt the local restaurants if they don't take advantage of it, don't see the opportunity there, and run a business so as to take an example of it. We have with Tracy, somebody who did the exact thing that we were talking about, because if you take advantage of what's going on, a food truck rally for a restaurant can be a boom. If you choose not to participate or do it, then it's going to be a bust. Plain and simple. And a lot of that has to do with some of the shops too that close. Um, if you take advantage of those people there and do something to get them in your business, you'll be a success. If you don't do it, it's going to be a bust. But there's some businesses that, that's not going to work for, because they have particular clientele come to these things, and that's a problem. But, again, the needs of the many always needs of the few. But there still are ways you can try to accommodate the few. There's still ways you can work. I can tell you, the group that spoke against it, there's at least one, maybe more, that I'm not going to satisfy no matter what I do. That's just the way it is. But there are others in talking of some of the suggestions that were made that are very doable. They've been in our minds, um, they're going to be talked about. And any other positive suggestions of, of what we can do to help, I'm always open to listen to. We heard some good suggestions from the ones with events of how to do it. And again, we're going to have some conversations about quality and quantity, but we're not going to be able to satisfy everybody. You're not going to get that, but, uh, there are things we're going to work on. Again, there's a lot of meetings to go through. There's at least two merchants meetings a month, one at the docks and one downtown. There's the meeting nine o'clock Thursdays, um, that's been, even before I was city manager, I'm usually at every one of those on Thursday morning. And, uh, I don't mind taking the forefront of being out there, taking the brunt of whoever doesn't like what I have to say, because I think you're right. A lot of these issues need to be handled at that point. Now, you may need to make the final decision if it comes to the point, but, you know, I'll be out there, uh, working, trying to listen to every solution, trying to find some parking solutions, trying to find those. But, you know, like we heard before with the docks and, and what we're hearing some with downtown, um, we need to have these things. We need to have them downtown. The people come back, they see the town, they see things you've never seen before. But there are ways to work to accommodate those that, uh, have some problems those days. There's better communication we can do. Like we're talking about, one of the mandates was to really get a plan for the whole year, not just keep doing these things, we're going to do this in two months, we're going to really look at a whole year and look at what we're going to do. People have plenty notice when these things are going. Um, we will, we will be working on quality things that we'd be doing on the streets. We'll be tying it. For instance, on the next food truck rally, we're going to talk about Thursday, something I've been thinking of working on, or really tying it into, to, while the people around there getting food, to get the shops to open up. And it's a great place to get a Valentine present for somebody with all the different shops downtown. It's all going to do it. So, not only do we want to bring them to food, but I want to figure a way to advertise it to, while you're there, there's the ideal place to find your gift and have the businesses, again, you've got to participate, you can't shut your door. You have to put some out, some stuff out that's ideal for that occasion. But again, work more events and to take advantage of, uh, the shops and, uh, not only, again, the food, dealing with the food, but dealing with those issues. So, all those things are, are discussed and I'm open to. I'll take the forefront out there to do it. And again, you may ma- need to make the decision later, but I have no problem doing it, because I've been trying to do it for the last three years. So, I'll be glad to do that, uh, for the Commission as we go forward.
Well, I definitely appreciate that, but, uh, those that know me know that I'm going to be visible. And because I'm visible, you know, I, I tend to take, you know, some hits, uh, from some of my friends. Uh, but, um, you know, as I stated before, and I definitely want to hear from my colleagues, but I just want to say this, is that everything that's been said tonight, you know, I, I take as somebody being very concerned about their business first and foremost. And I think that we try to do these things because we want to promote the businesses, promote Tarpon. And I, I've said to people, you know, personally and privately, that at some point in time, if we get beyond the one day, and whether we make the dollar that day, and try to see if we can make the dollar maybe the next day, we wouldn't be griping as much about that day. Because if we bring people to Tarpon, then it's everybody's responsibility to try to get them to come to their place. Um, I just say this, is that I would hope that the meeting that we need to have is not here. I appreciate what was said about us having a workshop and the rest of that, but a lot of times what happened here is, you know, we're talking, 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 talking. And the solutions that have come up, hopefully, the city manager's taken it and then it's digest and it's worked outside of this room. So, a lot of the things I think need to happen, need to work outside of this room. I think it benefits everybody to figure this out. I, I don't want to be one of the people saying, "Hey, uh, Tarpon Avenue is only going to be closed X number of times." So, you figure out what type of events that you want to have there. And if it's six times, that's it. You know, it's better if a lot of these things are done outside of this room. I think that some of the things for is accommodating parking and the vendors and the rest of that, as much as possible, need to try to occur. Um, but one of the things is, and I'll say this because I know that Teddy's already told me that, he's my friend. So, I know I can speak to my friend. You know, my friend told me about, you know, an event that was held, and, and he was tired of what was happening. He said tonight that people are discriminating. He's Greek, someone else is Hispanic, and I might be one of those people that's discriminating. Um, but I say this, is that we take a little effort, and we say that we're spending X number of dollars advertising, and we figure out all of these people that's running up and down Tarpon Avenue, and we take a little time and, and, and even give, uh, somebody a little job to take this handbill and pass it out to everybody, give a little discount, uh, to come into my store and do something. I, I just think that there's money to be made. And I could tell you, for another three years, if the Lord say the same, I'll be sitting up here. And I'm not going to be one that's going to be talking about wholesale, uh, uh, support of not closing Tarpon Avenue. We, we talk a lot about, we want to be like Dunedin, oh, Dunedin, yes, oh, Dunedin, Dunedin, Dunedin. And every time I look around, it's closed. The street's closed. Because they feel that if I can get them down here in front, then the rest will do. And I think it's the same thing for Tarpon Avenue. And now, now, I'm not saying that to say, I'm not sensitive to the buildings, the salons and the rest, that we can't work out a plan that's going to help everybody. But I can tell you this, is that nothing's going to happen if we don't decide, as some people said here, how do we work together? That's all I say. How do we work this thing together? And start trying to say, you know what, I might sacrifice one day because these other days are going to be a better day. And I will guarantee my friend Teddy, if he worked one of those events that is sitting in front of his store with one of the best, I know he would say the best meat market around, and y'all tell me where their meat markets at around this place. Thousands of people that's coming, I know he got a lot of people that's already shopping now, but everybody want more people. So, I say to my good friend, if you work it a little bit, I'll be a little bit more sensitive to your needs. I talked to the city manager about setting up something in terms of how we can maybe facilitate some of the parking and the rest of that. But some of it means that some of the people that had their complaints in the room need to go to some of the meetings and try to work that out. They always tell me that you don't want to have government as involved in something. Now, from our perspective, my perspective, that special events permit is something that could be very, very stringent. You could start looking at this, start looking at that, and it's starting to hurt everybody. I'm just saying that I'm hoping that the next meeting that they have, that the people that had some opposition would go and at least try to work it out. If it doesn't work out, I will guarantee you this, anyone that want to sit down with me personally, if they want to ha- make an appointment and sit down with me personally and tell me that the Merchants Association will not even listen to them, I will go to that meeting personally and carry your concern, if you want to work it out. So, I'm just saying that, is that I'm not going to be for in the wholesale clo- uh, non-closure of those streets. I think it benefits not only the people that's on Tarpon Avenue, but it benefits people all over Tarpon. One of the events maybe we need to try to stop is that of Tiffany, because I could tell you, it's just too many people coming to Tarpon, walking all up and down the streets, eating at everybody's restaurants, spending the gas, uh, their money on gas and shopping and the rest of that stuff. To me, I thought it was good for Tarpon. And I'm just saying that to my friends over there, is that some of these things are good for the collective body, and I believe it can be good for you too, if you work with the process. And I appreciate Tracy because she could be one that say, "You know what, I'm not going to work with no food court, uh, uh, food trucks. I got a restaurant." But if you're innovating, you're going to make money that day, and you're going to make money other day. So, I just think for me, that's how I feel about it. I appreciate Commissioner Tarpon bringing it forward. But I think that the solution to all of this rest outside there with the merchants, working together and trying to resolve it, if, if not, then it will come back to us. And then that means that we have to start making some hard decisions about how everything goes. So, with that, I go to my friend, uh, I know, uh, Commissioner Salory has a lot to say on this issue.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot to say. I think the mayor has said, it was very well spoken on this subject, and, um, I appreciate what he did have to say. And I appreciate all of you for being here this evening, and I both, in hearing both sides. And, um, it sounds like we have the same issue down at the Sponge Docks as well. And so, but this has been an ongoing issue in this community for, for quite a few years. Um, I've been to, I used to go to the TDC meetings, but when I went, I think it was before the city manager was in, nobody showed up. There was maybe four or five people, and nothing got accomplished. Um, so I stopped going, but I know Mark's been going, and I, I think it's been helpful that he has been attending. But, um, I think that we need to have the, all the merchants show up. And this is where you can talk out these issues. Um, when it comes to the food truck rally, I was so excited about those coming to our community. I mean, look at the people that come to our downtown just for the food truck rally. I don't necessarily, might not eat out of their trucks, because this is how I am, but it's brought me down there. Um, except those, the, the stuffed, uh, macaroni cheese is awesome. But, um, but you know where it brought me to? It brought me to Currents. I'd never been into Currents, and the last three times I've gone into Currents because, I'm telling you, because the food truck rally brought me downtown. And, um, they did things right. They have somebody standing outside, they worked it. Starting with his little hat on, serving those martinis, did a great job. And, and they're packed, they're packed. So, I don't think it's hurting our business. Um, I think this can be worked out. Unfortunately, I don't think it is that we should be sitting here working out these solutions. Um, but I, you know, as, as Sue Thomas had mentioned, in fifteen months, we've closed Tarpon Avenue seven times. I don't think that's unfair, an unfair amount of times. Maybe what we need, do need to do again is work things out, especially when it comes to the food truck rally, because that's something I would hate to lose. Um, and working with the other restaurants downtown, if, if it's an issue, and, you know, if the Saturday night's an issue, you know, we make it another evening. I'm not sure. But these are things that can be worked out. Um, I do want to, I do want to thank Cindy Comstock, because she brought in, from what I understand, you spearheaded the snow place like Tarpon Springs. And, and wherever the snow was, the reindeer, I've never seen the reindeer. Wow, what an event that was. We had more people than we've ever, ever had in this community. And, um, and, you know, it was a collaborative effort on everybody's part. And, and like I said, so if things can be worked out, um, I've, I've been hearing it's been a tough year downtown and the Sponge Docks when it comes to sales. So, whatever we can do to help, uh, you know, I know Mark's been very accommodating. Um, so again, it, you know, I think it's just a small issue, small issues that we're talking about, but if, if we can get more people to the, to the TDC meeting, now, that's separate from the Merchants Association meeting, is that correct? Okay. So, can I ask when the Merchants Association meets? First Wednesday and the third Friday, and that's the merchants. And that, they meet at the, okay. And that's at the Chamber? Have you been that? Okay. And I've been to the one at Coaster, and again, it's the same small group of people, the same people doing everything. And, um, but I, I think, I think we can come, uh, or you all can come to some sort of an agreement. I have to mention, though, um, what Commissioner Delacour, former Commissioner Delacour has stated about, um, after the events, I believe this was when Mr. Cruz was here, there was some form that we had asked to be filled out so we could get an idea of what, how many people were brought in, and how much money may have been made. And there was certain questions, um, you know, there was some sort of a survey. And I think we should maybe look into that again.
I've got it down.
You have it? I remember us talking about it.
I've got it down on here, I think.
Okay. Because, um, it would be, um, a good gauge for us to see what's working and what's not working. But again, um, I think it could be, uh, a colla- and everybody's part of collaborative effort, and I think, um, we can continue. We are on the right track here, we're bringing people to town. Um, when it comes to using Orange Street, occasionally, I would say occasionally, is that Orange? Court Street. I would say occasionally use Court Street, I wouldn't use it all the time. But for some of the smaller events, maybe a art and crafts will show, or something like that, or you want to call it a B event on whatever, but whatever you want to classify it. That might be a good idea. Um, but I, and Ms. Thomas had talked about parking for the, um, vendors. Now, I've seen them use the, the parking lot at the, at the Trains Depot before. So, it's just, okay. So, that's something that we need to work out.
Again, that's on the list too.
Yeah, because that's a great place for people to park, to go to Acropolis. Um, it's close.
Yeah, people on our events aren't following that, and we need to be more stringent and ensure that.
Okay. So, again, these are just little things we need to work out. And then once we get them worked out, we'll even be more successful. So, hopefully, I'm not sure, I, um, probably, I don't know if we'll have a work session or not, but Mark will work, work with everybody as well. And please, feel free to call, to call me anytime, and I'll listen. I'll come- And please feel free to call, to call me anytime, and I'll listen. I'll come down and I'll listen. Thank you.
Uh, yes. First, I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for being here tonight, late as it is, and, uh, appreciate all the input you guys gave us. I think it's great. Um, really, it seems like we're going back to the way it was like a year ago, the same questions have been brought up, uh, the same concerns. Uh, it seems like teamwork is the, the, the biggest issue that we have is work together and to get this thing done. And I would like to, uh, uh, ask Mr. Lacuris to work with the, uh, with the business community, both the downtown and the Sponge Docks, and bring us back with the, uh, recommendation, some of the things we can do to include, uh, everybody, uh, like the, the food rally that we talked about. How can we actually, uh, invite some of the local restaurants to participate on that? Do they have to be vendors, or we can actually have our local businesses to be part of it? Uh, I don't know if there's any, uh, any, any part of the contract that you, any stipulation in the contract that you have to do.
No, we make sure that there's no restrictions on our local businesses.
Okay, so that's one thing that we can get some of the restaurants to be involved if they really want to. Uh, and also to, uh, to work some of the businesses that it's in, in a service type business, that they do have the access to, uh, to, uh, the customers have access to this business as well, like the other beauty shop there, make sure that they're able to get into it. Uh, Acropolis, uh, Mr. Facus, as well as the other places too. Seems like, uh, uh, that these things can be worked out beforehand and then come back over here for the final decision. I think, uh, uh, working together is the, uh, the key of the issue that we, we're dealing with here, uh, in both places, Sponge Docks and downtown. So with that, I wanna thank everybody for being here tonight. I think it was great.
Thank you. Um, I, I can be brief cuz so many things have already been said that I don't need to restate. I, I primarily just wanna say thank you. Uh, I wanna say thank you to a, um, small core group of people, most of whom are in the audience right now, that worked so hard to put these events together. I think the events that we've had over the past couple of years have been extremely successful. And I don't just mean the ones where we shut down the streets. I would include in that things like the, the craft beer walk and the wine walk and, uh, you know, just all kinds of different events that are bringing people to downtown, bringing people to the Sponge Docks, bringing people to Tarpon Springs. Uh, there are valid concerns, and I think everybody's gonna work together to, um, try to find the best way to keep everybody happy. Uh, and I, I think some of the creative, uh, business plans, like, like we talked about with Currents and, and some of the other businesses, that find a way to be successful, I think that's really what needs to continue to take place. And like I said, I really just wanna say thank you to that, to that core group of people. We've got the Chamber and downtown and the Sponge Docks all working together, and I think it's a very positive thing, and I hope that it can continue.
So much to encourage, the ball is in your court, and, and I know that, uh, ultimately, if we all look at what we're gonna be able to gain, um, it's gonna be successful. So I too thank everybody that's been involved. I know that, um, um, some are very, very passionate. And you're that way because, hey, you have a business, plus you're doing all the work. And then sometime when the work that you do is being criticized, it's not the most comfortable feeling. But I'm looking for us to have an exciting two thousand thirteen, and have even more people come to Tarpon and have more businesses flourish. And one of the positive things I think about having something happen on Tarpon Avenue, people get the feeling that Tarpon Avenue is the place to be. Maybe some of those, uh, vacant buildings, there's somebody might wanna open them up and have what, um, Mr. Facus talked about, a dry cleaning and the rest of it. First thing, people have to believe that their business is gonna be viable. And if you got people coming, uh, and, and participating, then more people are, are liable to, uh, to open up a business downtown, so. With that, I just say thank you, and we'll move to the next item, but hey, we definitely will look at working some things out. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, you, you have some more to say?
Just a few comments.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I just wanna reiterate that I, I've always been in support of events downtown. I mean, I think they're great. I could go on and on about what they do for the town as a whole and economic benefit. Um, you know, there were some concerns, and there still are, and I just think that it would be beneficial to every so often, uh, look at these events and think, well, we can tweak, we can always become better, um, as a town and with these events. And I think some of the things that were mentioned tonight too, which I wrote down, which were, one, the remote vendor parking, um, which I'd like to know that if, when a vendor signs up for an event, when they, do they sign a contract, when they give their check? And in that contract, is there specific instructions on where those remote parking lots are? And if there aren't, if we could add that. Um, and again, as Commissioner Slattery mentioned, the, uh, success based report, which is something that, uh, Mr. Delacis brought up. And I think with that report, that's where you'll see the quality of your event. And you'll see, and you'll be able to categorize, that's an A event, that's a B event. And a B event, it doesn't necessarily have to be a bad thing. It can be a B event based on attendance. It can be a B event for a variety of reasons. So I think that the success report, you know, is in fact a good thing and, and gives us a tool, you know, is a data tool to look for the future. So thank you for everybody who, who attended tonight.
Just another thing to add on, something we had talked about too, about the B event. There's also a way B events can tie into Tarpon Avenue by, for instance, when you approve the event, allowing, for instance, a sidewalk sale on Tarpon Avenue at the same time, something to get them to the downtown also. So, so we had talked, we had talked about working on that angle. If the events are on Court Street, what kind can we do? And all we have to do is put on the special event that we're allowing, you know, we're allowing for that day that the event's going on, the businesses outside sidewalk sales, things like that, to, to give them the incentive of, although they're on Court Street, to go there. So that's another thing we had talked about that we wanna look at and tune. We do those events, the time right in, so you have a two street event that people will circulate to.
You can have an A and a B event at the same time?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Well, one of the things that I would encourage, if we're gonna do this A, B event, is that there is some type of criteria that makes it an A event, a B event. What I don't wanna have to be dealing with is that there are other people that might wanna have events, and we talk about special event permits and the rest of that, that they might be a B event based on what. So if we're gonna have this A event, B event, the rest of that, there should be some type of criteria that will state that.
I'm not more into the A and B type things, but...
Yeah, I'm just saying that we do that.
I'm not A and B, but, um, you know, we can work those things out.
Okay. All right, the, uh, next item that we have is item number twenty-six, that's the Appointment to Plan and Zoning Board.
Uh, just to give you a little, obviously you see a recommendation from myself in there, so I wanna sort of, uh, explain to myself. Um, first of all, um, what is asking for in this memo, I don't think it's gonna have a lot to do. We have a very important discussion on the twenty seconds, um, about the Planning and Zoning Board. Um, it's gonna be on the agenda, about policies and rules for it. Um, it may include memberships, it may include a lot of things. I can tell you right now, we need to look at these things now because I think two thousand thirteen is the year things are turning around. And if I'm gonna have Karen Lemmons promoting businesses in here, if we're gonna be working hard, and we miss this moment, cuz, again, I think the moment is now, and I think each of you, from now until the twenty seconds, really need to look at the Planning and Zoning Board, the direction, the members on it, and is that the way you want to be represented? The people we're gonna be bringing in and this change to the economy moving up and people coming in, if that's the way you need to go. If it's not the way to go, we need to decide the twenty second of a different direction to go. Whether it's adherence, more, you know, more adherence to rules, um, operations, or again, you may need to deal with the people who are on that board. You have the right as a commissioner with a majority vote to any time without cause, change the membership of that board. If you're looking and talking to people in the next two weeks and you're satisfied of what you've seen the last year, if you're satisfied with what you saw at the summer meeting, then if you're bored, you should stay that course. Um, if you stay that course, then staff and I will have to adjust and adapt and, and work with it. But if there's a thought that we need to go another way, we need to make that, we may need to make that decision now. And the reason these appointments, I don't think you're gonna have any issues with these appointments or filling these positions with what we have now. I don't think this is the issue you need to deal with and decide on. So, um, wholeheartedly in, in, in favor of, of moving the alternate up to the position, uh, with the resignation of Carl Wagonfor for the board. And, uh, and, uh, we found out in our looking at the things, that there is a member who, whose term was up in November. We implore him, Mr. Jelousis, ask that. And again, if I thought this had any effect to your discussion the twenty second, I do it. But in preparing for it, I don't think this has any discussions. I've asked to wait on the alternate position, cuz I think a lot you need to talk about at that meeting the twenty second also, is the selection process. We have gone out for the Board of Adjustments and the Planning and Zoning Board for more involvement. I think there needs to be a, a better process, really looking, instead of just names and things on paper, we need to talk about the members. And I think the people you rep- pick from the public to represent on this board are, are very important, and we need to... So I think we need to talk about that before we bring other people onto the board. But these people who are the alternate and who are on the board now, I don't think there's any issues with, so. Very comfortable and recommend you put this in place, so we have that portion in place, and then we talk about all the issues. Then you come to the decision on your board of where we need to go on the twenty second.
Hear that, uh, hear the comments, uh, the motion?
I'd like to ma- make a motion that we move the current alternate George Chambers to regular member to fill the unexpired term of Carl Wagonfor. This term expires October first, two thousand fourteen, and reappoint John Jelousis to another three year term, term to expire October first, two thousand fifteen.
Any, uh, public comments inside? You're not road call?
Peter Delacas, five one four Ashland Avenue. Uh, don't really have a problem with what you're doing tonight as far as appointments are moving, fine. But I am kinda curious as to these statements of issues with people and the direction of the board and all that stuff. So are you wanting a board complacent that will bend over and do whatever an applicant is asking? Is that what you're talking about? Are you looking for citizens that are looking into the best interests of the city for the long term? I don't know, I'm kinda curious because when I hear problems with the board and problems with individuals, but no names or no specific items discussed, it makes you wonder, it's kinda vague out there. Now, we all know, we all serve at the pleasure of the board, or the Board of Commissioners. Now, if you wanna look at something, I'd say something else. You may have some people on there, you like their opinions and their attitudes. But a lot of times, they don't show up. So if you wanna look at something, look at attendance. Another thing that I've had an issue with, members being appointed to the board and just sitting on their hands. I want people on the board that are gonna contribute. You put them there, I, in the past, would put them there. I want people there that are going to contribute, take some active aspect in learning the issue, and knowing what the issue is, so they can bring valid questions or concerns to the table. And I know we have Ms. Lemmons, and we have economic development's a cr- critical issue, and I don't disagree with that. We all want economic development, and we know we're all fighting against other cities or other communities for that piece of the pie. However, it doesn't mean that we have to loosen standards, or look to appoint people that are going to be, let's say, uh, well, not so willing to look at all the options. And the other thing about procedures, if some of you aren't familiar with, but the Planning and Zoning Board, we do set our own policies and procedures, and Mr. Yakavon can attest that we've had sometimes a couple of meetings to, to narrow those down and fine tune them to what we thought would be, uh, an effective way to handle our board. So I just would like to feel like we're getting a little bit more, uh, information from this board as to what the concerns are as compared to just vague statements, while we got an issue with the direction, or we have an issue with some people's approaches. I think some of it is, and we've talked about it at our meetings, when we have new people come on board, and we've talked about it with Rodney, and, and I don't see Renee here, but, uh, some kind of a training process to get new people on board familiar with what a Planning and Zoning Board does look at, and the criteria and the characteristics that they need to have on the board to, to make those judgments. So as a board, I think we are working towards those things and trying to fine tune those aspects. But, uh, I think it'd be nice to get some clarity on some of those things before, you know, the agenda shows up and whether there's gonna be information in the backup with regards to your direction or your concerns with members, I don't know. But, uh, we'll find out.
Thank you. Uh, I definitely appreciate your ability to come in here, being a member of the Planning and Zoning Board. But I could tell you as one person, and we haven't really talked about it a lot, I don't think Planning and Zoning, uh, members should come, speak here on their behalf, talking about things, calling people carpetbaggers, uh, representing themselves as the board, as the individual, those type of things. And I just say as one person here, every board, every committee is appointed by this committee here. This, the people elected us, we should have some say in what happens, and not to have, we don't need a rubber stamp board. But we do, do need people that's gonna be objective and follow the guidelines that's stated, and not, uh, interject their personal opinions, uh, in a manner that could cost the city dollars in relationship to lawsuits. So I just say that, and I look forward to the city manager bringing something forward and us looking at it objectively. And when we do, it's all gonna be public, so it's not gonna be anything hidden from anybody, so. With that, uh, no other public comments, road call?
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor LaHoo?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. That concludes our, uh, agenda for this evening. Any, uh, comments from Chief?
Yeah, of course. Thanks for approving our mutual A agreement. And, um, I will say this year, obviously from a city perspective, but from a public safety perspective, Tiffany was definitely an A event this year. Probably an A place, uh, plus, plus, plus event, but, uh, went very well for us. Um, and also, um, I've already got all the information in item number twenty-one, and then we will be sending them some information tomorrow to get together, and hopefully we can work with them. Thank you.
What's your turn?
Nothing to say.
And the managers? Adam Clark?
I just wanna remind everyone, uh, next Tuesday night, January fifteenth, uh, the League of Women Voters, along with the city, will be hosting a candidate forum here in the auditorium. It is open to the public. From six to six thirty, there will be a meet and greet the candidates. From six thirty to eight, they'll, they'll have an opportunity, uh, to ask the candidates questions through the moderator. Um, that's it. Tuesday, next Tuesday night, January fifteenth.
Commissioner Larson?
No comment.
Vice Mayor?
No comment.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Nothing else to say, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Slattery?
I do have just one comment. I have to say, I enjoyed Epiphany this year. It was a, just a wonderful event, a wonderful day, and, um, so we had a beautiful day, uh, weather wise, unlike what we were all told was going to be like, and, um, and it just made it even more better, but more, more festive. Um, and I do wanna just relay, if you could, Chief, we had other agencies helping out that day, and, um, thank, they, I don't know, like they were helping our, this department, I guess.
Yeah, the mutual agreement.
Okay, that's what it was, you know, please relay my thing. They did a great job, and, um, just, uh, all around was, was, was nice, was very good. Uh, they did a great job, and, um, just, uh, all around, was, was, was nice, was very good. Yeah, I know, and I figured, I'm sure we had everybody on duty that day, and, you know, I, I was talking to somebody, I didn't realize it was a new Fort Ricky police officer, like, oh, you're new, you know. Well, I'm, but anyway, please thank them for their help. Thank you.
I, I too just wanna say, uh, thank you to, uh, uh, to, to the chief and all of, uh, the individuals that, uh, uh, supported, um, the, the enforcement, law enforcement. You know, we had the lieutenant governor, uh, which, uh, brought in, uh, a little bit more need for security, and everything went well, and, uh, Commissioner Slattery was right, and we had a great day, considering.
He had perfect timing at the intersection of Pinellas and, uh, didn't have anyone getting on that.
Well, you did a great job of getting in, uh, but, uh, with that, uh, there are no other comments. We will adjourn at ten o'clock.